Thank you. For those who are able, please rise and we're going to do the pledge of allegiance. Hand over your heart. Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, we have one presentation this evening. I want to introduce our animal care services for our pet adoption, our bi-monthly pet adoption. Sometimes it takes awhile because you know, we have animals. And Paul, can you help with the rope? Make sure that it's out of the way.
Good evening. Thanks again for having us. I don't know if you've been to a large grocery store lately or to, gosh, I don't know, Best Buy or Costco and you go down the aisle and there's 5,000 of a thing and you just can't decide. And so then you sometimes decide, oh, I'm just not going to get anything right now. That is happening at our shelter. There are so many dogs that people come and they're overwhelmed with the choice. So I want to once again thank you for having us here because this gives us an opportunity to highlight one dog separate from the rest so that this dog can shine. And so tonight I have Danny. He's so sweet. Danny is eight months old. He's trying to be a cow. He's not really. He is just the most precious, precious boy. We brought a little bit of toddler energy with us tonight. So he is learning some sitting and he is just super friendly, really happy to meet you, wants to be your buddy. Stephanie is here tonight. She's one of our amazing dog volunteers. She walks the dogs. She is a rare breed because she works with the large dogs. So she's often walking the large dogs, the bully breeds. So we're really happy for her to be here tonight. All right. So Danny's been at the shelter for about three weeks. Again, that's another reason why he's still with us because he doesn't have an opportunity to shine on his own. So we're really hoping that somebody will see him tonight and fall in love with him, whether it's through this broadcast later or tonight if there's anybody in the audience here that sees him and says to yourself, "That's my dog." We want to get you guys together. Kingsley, who was our guest the last time we were here, is still at the shelter, still available for adoption. We have 123 dogs available right now. So I want to just say real quick too that if you're interested in adopting, you can always go to our website, which is longbeach.gov/acs. All of our pets that are available for adoption are there for you to see. You can also submit an application online right then and there for adoption and then you'll come to the shelter to visit. We asked you to hold phone calls and just come to the shelter when we're open, which is Wednesday through Friday from 10 until 5:30 and Saturday and Sunday from 10 until 4:00. All right, I'm going to hand it over to Megan Ignacio.
Hello. So it is Pet Preparedness Month for June. We partnered up with the Disaster Preparedness and Emergency Communications Department to, they provided us 100 emergency kits suggesting food, water, photos of ownership, medication, paperwork, toys, treats, collars with ID tags, which is very important right now because we're preparing for 4th of July. And it is very important to make sure all of your microchip information is up to date. We are having a lot of events as far as in District 7. We are wrapping up our series with Councilmember Oranga at Admiral Cade Park. We're having our Foster the Fourth kickoff event so you can choose your pet. We have 100, over 100 dogs to choose from. So we're trying to make space for all the incoming pets that are going to be coming in, escaping or getting lost during the holiday season. And we're also going to be having another District 3 event over at the Red Car Green Belt as well.
All right. Well, thank you to our Animal Care Services team. Good job. He took a tour. Danny's a good boy. And I think what's cool is Danny is a puppy. So Danny, he can still, you know, learn a whole bunch. He's got a full life ahead of him. He's got great energy. I can tell he's good with people, right? Some people he backed off. You saw Tom, he was like, "I don't know about the city manager. We're going to have to work on that, Tom." But what's cool is Danny's just like all the animals, the pets that we have in our shelter. So although we have a great record here at getting the pets that come to City Hall adopted, there's so many more at our shelter. So I encourage you to go down or visit our website and see if there's a new member of your family just waiting for you to meet. So Danny, here, I got the last treat for you. Looking for it? Here, come get it. Okay. All right, let's hear it for our Animal Control Services, Animal Care Services. All right. Good, thanks a lot.
Mayor, just to mention the fact that this adoption portion of our city council is great and so far we're batting 1,000 on adoptions. So I just thought I'd bring that up.
That's right, we're batting 1,000. These dogs are incredible and but we could be doing so much more if all of us just, you know, support. If we all do our part, we can make a real difference here. So thank you so much. Well, now get started with the city council meeting. Let's hear our consent calendar, please. Okay, we need a motion and a second on consent and for the first time in who knows how long there are no recusals on consent? All right, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any public comment on consent? Seeing none, members, please cast your vote.
The motion is carried.
Thank you. Let's hear item 39, please.
Item 39 is a report from City Manager. Recommendation to continue the local emergency of homelessness within the city of Long Beach and receive and file an update on the emergency declaration and associated activities. CDY.
Thank you. And for those who have been following us this year, every other city council meeting, we continue our emergency proclamation and receive an update on the work that we're doing on homelessness. So we do this at least twice a month and we prioritize it right at the beginning of the meeting. So staff, take us away.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So we've got a presentation tonight and we're going to focus tonight on a number of the construction projects that we're working on as part of our response to homelessness. We have a number of new assets and buildings that we're working on and putting into service to really support us. I'm going to turn it over to Deputy City Manager Teresa Chandler, who's been taking even more of a role in our incident response, as well as Eric Lopez and Paul Duncan.
All right, good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council Members. We are here for our 11th update on our proclamation to address homelessness. So I'm going to turn it over to Eric. We're going to co-present this evening.
Thank you, Tom. Thank you, Teresa. Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council, I am happy that today we get to focus on the capital projects and do a little deeper dive on them. And we really look forward to engaging with the community and with our partners to really bring home some of these critical projects that are going to offer housing opportunities and services that are needed within the community. So I'm going to jump into the list of projects. As you know, we have the former Luxury Inn, Best Western, and our Youth Navigation Center and the tiny homes that we're building at the multi-service center. Altogether, these projects will bring a total of 222 beds. Right now, the former Best Western is operating and we are doing improvements to it as it's active. And so we're going to see what some of those improvements are going to be coming later this year, what they are and what they're going to look like. So let's start with the Luxury Inn. We know where it's located. We have been working with the design team on improving the perimeter fencing. We're finalizing the design. We're looking at exterior painting for the facility, replacing doors, adding a new fire, sprinkler, and alarm system. There's a lot of accessibility improvements that are also going to be made. We're also looking at renovations that are needed in the rooms and the new bathrooms and installing energy efficient equipment like the sinks and the toilets. We're also looking at upgrading lighting to LEDs and looking at flooring and painting improvements that will really help refresh the building, the facility. And then we are looking at a new modular trailer that will also be there for services. So I just wanted to show rendering of the
Stephanie is here tonight. She's one of our amazing dog volunteers. She walks the dogs. She is a rare breed because she works with the large dogs. So she's often walking the large dogs, the bully breeds. So we're really happy for her to be here tonight. All right. So Danny has been at the shelter for about three weeks. Again, that's another reason why he's still with us, because he doesn't have an opportunity to shine on his own. So we're really hoping that somebody will see him tonight and fall in love with him, whether it's through this broadcast later or tonight if there's anybody in the audience here that sees him and says to yourself, "That's my dog." We want to get you guys together. Kingsley, who was our guest the last time we were here, is still at the shelter, still available for adoption. We have 123 dogs available right now. So I want to just say real quick, too, that if you're interested in adopting, you can always go to our website, which is longbeach.gov/ACS. All of our pets that are available for adoption are there for you to see. You can also submit an application online right then and there for adoption, and then you'll come to the shelter to visit. We asked you to hold phone calls and just come to the shelter when we're open, which is Wednesday through Friday from 10 until 5:30, and Saturday and Sunday from 10 until 4:00. All right, I'm going to hand it over to Megan Ignacio.
Hello. So it is Pet Preparedness Month for June. We partnered up with the Disaster Preparedness and Emergency Communications Department to... They provided us 100 emergency kits, suggesting food, water, photos of ownership, medication, paperwork, toys, treats, collars with ID tags, which is very important right now because we're preparing for 4th of July. And it is very important to make sure all of your microchip information is up to date. We are having a lot of events as far as in District 7. We are wrapping up our series with Councilmember Oranga at Admiral Cade Park. We're having our Foster the Fourth kickoff event, so you can choose your pet. We have over 100 dogs to choose from. So we're trying to make space for all the incoming pets that are going to be coming in, escaping or getting lost during the holiday season. And we're also going to be having another District 3 event over at the Red Car Green Belt as well.
All right. Well, thank you to our Animal Care Services team. Good job. He took a tour. Danny's a good boy. And I think what's cool is Danny is a puppy. So Danny, he can still, you know, learn a whole bunch. He's got a full life ahead of him. He's got great energy. I can tell he's good with people, right? Some people, he backed off. You saw Tom. He was like, "I don't know about the city manager." We're going to have to work on that, Tom. But what's cool is Danny's just like all the animals, the pets that we have in our shelter. So although we have a great record here at getting the pets that come to City Hall adopted, there's so many more at our shelter. So I encourage you to go down or visit our website and see if there's a new member of your family just waiting for you to meet. So Danny, here, I got the last treat for you. Looking for it? Here, come get it. Okay. All right, let's hear it for our Animal Control Services, Animal Care Services. All right. Good. Thanks a lot.
Mayor, just to mention the fact that this adoption portion of our city council is great, and so far, we're batting 1,000 on adoptions. So I just thought I'd bring that up.
That's right. We're batting 1,000. These dogs are incredible, but we can do so much more if all of us just, you know, support. If we all do our part, we can make a real difference here. So thank you so much. Well, now get started with the city council meeting. Let's hear our consent calendar, please. Okay, we need a motion and a second on consent, and for the first time in who knows how long, there are no recusals on consent. All right, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any public comment on consent? Seeing none, members, please cast your vote.
The motion is carried.
Thank you. Let's hear item 39, please.
Item 39 is a report from City Manager. Recommendation to continue the local emergency of homelessness within the city of Long Beach and receive and file an update on the emergency declaration and associated activities. City Y.
Thank you. And for those who have been following us this year, every other city council meeting, we continue our emergency proclamation and receive an update on the work that we're doing on homelessness. So we do this at least twice a month, and we prioritize it right at the beginning of the meeting. So staff, take us away.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So we've got a presentation tonight, and we're going to focus tonight on a number of the construction projects that we're working on as part of our response to homelessness. We have a number of new assets and buildings that we're working on and putting into service to really support us. I'm going to turn it over to Deputy City Manager Teresa Chandler, who's been taking even more of a role in our incident response, as well as Eric Lopez and Paul Duncan.
All right. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council members. We are here for our 11th update on our proclamation to address homelessness. So I'm going to turn it over to Eric. We're going to co-present this evening.
Thank you, Tom. Thank you, Teresa. Honorable Mayor, members of the city council, I am happy that today we get to focus on the capital projects and do a little deeper dive on them. And we really look forward to engaging with the community and with our partners to really bring home some of these critical projects that are going to offer housing opportunities and services that are needed within the community. So I'm going to jump into the list of projects. As you know, we have the former Luxury Inn, Best Western, and our Youth Navigation Center, and the tiny homes that we're building at the multi-service center. Altogether, these projects will bring a total of 222 beds. Right now, the former Best Western is operating, and we are doing improvements to it as it's active. And so we're going to see what some of those improvements are going to be coming later this year, what they are and what they're going to look like. So let's start with the Luxury Inn. We know where it's located. We have been working with the design team on improving the perimeter fencing. We're finalizing the design. We're looking at exterior painting for the facility, replacing doors, adding a new fire sprinkler and alarm system. There's a lot of accessibility improvements that are also going to be made. We're also looking at renovations that are needed in the rooms and the new bathrooms, and installing energy-efficient equipment like the sinks and the toilets. We're also looking at upgrading lighting to LEDs and looking at flooring and painting improvements that will really help refresh the building, the facility. And then we are looking at a new modular trailer that will also be there for services. So I just wanted to show rendering of the fence that we're designing and some of the facade improvements, including the new painting and the new doors that you can see. This rendering is very different from what's there now. So our goal is to really help improve the area, provide more lighting, refresh the facade, and really complement a lot of the improvements we've done on Long Beach Boulevard and that we're planning to continue to do in the immediate area. Just a snapshot of some of the rooms and kind of some of the designs that we're looking at. So you just can see a refresh and just high quality. We just want to make sure that we create spaces that are welcoming and warm and help us address the needs. It's very important, community outreach and engagement. We have developed a plan that is underway. We are looking at implementing or at really picking up the community engagement this month so the community can expect to be reached out, to be engaged in communications. And we're going to maintain that engagement throughout the coming months before construction and during as we look to finalize this very important project. I'm going to jump to the former Best Western. And at this location, we are looking at reconfiguring the lobby and surrounding first floor areas to better accommodate our operations. The common areas that previously served as a dining area, a fitness center, and a front desk for the hotel would be reconverted to offices for caseworkers, a nurse station, and other onsite support staff. We're also looking at second-floor improvements to serve as a residence lounge and additional staff working space. And then it'll also come with new flooring, paint, energy efficiency, equipment and fixtures, and then improvements to the hallways and common spaces. So, you know, we do show a picture of the current swimming pool. That area will become an activated space that could be used, and I'll get to that. But here's a rendering of the interior by where the old lobby for the hotel used to be, and we're going to add more spaces for gatherings, for meetings, and for services. We do have a floor plan for the Best Western that shows the configuration, the new configuration of that first floor, and really the focus is on creating spaces that could be used by our staff and our team members there, and also by our support services partners. We also have a rendering of the outside where the pool used to be, and some of the improvements we're looking at, including new benches and fitness stations and an area for dogs, and just to continue to meet the needs of our residents as they're here. So for this project, this is one of three Home Key projects that we've successfully received funding for. And the goal here is for non-congregate temporary housing as well. It is currently operational. It was purchased in 2001, and it opened for operations in 2001. So a lot of great work that is happening here. We'll be working with them as we make our own improvements to the areas that we just went through. I'm now going to jump into the Youth Navigation Center. This is a project that is also that we've been working really hard on. This will provide 12 youth beds and 59 storage lockers, and our renovations will include both inside renovation and then a facade improvement as well. So the goal here is to provide daily storage that allows for participants to leave belongings and go to work, go to school, be able to take care of errands and tasks. And we're also looking at just the interior walls, providing showers, remodeling the existing restrooms, and also installing energy efficiency fixtures as well. So this facility will get a new roof and HVAC as well, which will really help. So here's just a plan of the proposed improvements and some of the sleeping pod concepts that we're looking at, and then just some of the different materials and finishes and colors that are going to be used here at this navigation center. And here's just another rendering of one of the common areas here. And for the navigation center, we are looking at providing storage lockers for use by our homeless services participants for safe storage of belongings and engaging in services with our multi-service center, as well as other programming. Storage will be required to be renewed every two weeks. So there's constant engagement that's going to be used here. So the idea is to have staff and security 24 hours a day, seven days a week as well, at this facility. And then last but not least, we wanted to highlight the work on the tiny homes in the multi-service center. We have our site plan. We've been working really hard since this came to city council on the procurement agreement for the tiny homes. We are looking at 27 standard studios and six accessible studios. The project will include using the parking space for these modular units. We're looking to create a space to house a residence within a tiny home village that will have a guard station. We're also looking at drought-tolerant landscaping, LED lighting, and bicycle parking as well. I do want to note that these tiny homes will have their own bathrooms, including the shower, and they also have air conditioning and heating. Creative Wi-Fi finding will be installed to help. So we wanted to show some pictures of the site plan and how they're going to be organized, and also a view of the rooms. You see the bed here. You see the HVAC on the top. It's closer to the ceiling. You see a picture of the restrooms and just kind of the setup of these modular tiny homes and how we're looking to install them. So these tiny homes do also provide non-congregative temporary housing with onsite supportive services through the multi-service center. They do have the showers, as I stated earlier, the HVAC, fire sprinklers as well. I forgot to mention that earlier. They're all getting fire safety improvements as well. Other services will provide areas for seating, pet runs, bike racks, lighting, and again, this will have a controlled entry, and it will have security 24 hours a day, seven days a week as well. The budget that has been set aside for this project is $20.9 million overall. This is based on an early estimate. We are finalizing the design and working with the contractors on the final bid, so it is subject to change. However, the target to start construction is this summer for all of these. The teams have been working really hard, not just since January, but even before for some of these projects, and we're really excited to get to the point where we can start talking about target construction dates and start planning, working with our staff to plan toward that and do all the outreach engagements we need, not just before, but during as well. And then from here, I'm going to turn it back over to Teresa. Teresa?
Thank you, Eric. All right. So I'm just going to talk about the actions that the team has taken over the last two weeks. So, starting with our first goal of increasing access to services. So this week, we're actually inviting people who are currently using the safe parking lot at Queensway to relocate to a new site. The new site is within close proximity of the one that's currently in use. This move was necessary, given the summer events that take place down there during this time of the year. The second mobile MSC, also known as the MAC, is just about ready to roll out. However, in order to get it into full rotation, more staff need to be brought on board. So additional staff are currently in the onboarding process, and we anticipate getting the second MAC out there as soon as all staff have been hired. For the MAC that's currently in operation, since the beginning of the proclamation in January, there have been 1,278 engagements with people who are experiencing homelessness by our outreach team members. And out of those folks, 703 people have accepted services. Also, since January, the multi-service center has received 18,016 visitors with a daily average of 177. And our safe parking program has had 933 total stays within the average, and an average of 17 vehicles per night just in June alone. For our goal to increase interim and long-term housing access, we're making progress on identifying an ongoing emergency shelter site, and more to come on that very soon. We're also working on identifying a potential Home Key site, since the state application due date is coming up soon. It is critical to our housing efforts that we get to 100% utilization of our emergency housing vouchers, so definitely working on that. And staff have begun an implementation process to get people linked with 80 stabilization vouchers, which were also issued by HUD. We will be prioritizing people who are holding emergency housing vouchers at the time of full utilization. For our goal of engaging community in data planning and assistance, we are continuing to explore translation options for the data dashboard. The city team is hosting an interfaith convening in partnership with the Long Beach Ministers Alliance, LA Voice, and the Long Beach Collective on Thursday, June 22nd, for faith leaders and organizations from across the city. Our overarching goal is to provide corridors of hope, resources, advocacy, and self-sufficiency for our unhoused community through civic and faith-based engagement. And we will be connecting with faith leaders who are already or wanting to connect with the city's efforts to address homelessness, both now and after the emergency efforts have come to an end. And for building capacity to address our homeless crisis, the Intergovernmental Work Group has drafted a framework to guide the city's focus on prevention policy. They have identified leads to coordinate the various policy pathways to uplift this work going forward, and multiple team members from the EOC, Emergency Operations Center, will be joining the group to dive into this prevention-focused work. After a lot of time and effort put into outreach and recruitment for these positions, all of the public health nurse positions that sit in the Homeless Services Bureau have finally been filled. Very exciting. And also, the team met with Governor Newsom's new Senior Advisor on Housing and Homelessness to not only discuss projects within Long Beach, but to also advocate for additional support for projects coming from the state level. So the last few slides, we're looking back over the last couple of weeks, and the next few slides will highlight what's coming in the next two weeks. So back to our first goal of increasing access to services. We will continue to meet with LA County Department of Health Services and LASSA, Los Angeles Homeless Services Authority, always a mouthful, about partnership opportunities. We will continue to increase our outreach and education to people who are living in their RVs about the availability of the RV sanitation and water filling site. We're also exploring other possibilities for utilization of the site. We need to find a long-term safe parking site, so we will have to relocate from this temporary site that we're currently moving to. So a longer-term plan is needed. We're going to be reaching out to our faith leaders and other organizations around the city to see if anyone is willing to partner with us or a community partner for long-term programming. And the Housing Authority will continue to update the Housing Choice voucher list in order to move people from the list into housing. The goal of engaging community in data planning and assistance, the next data dashboard update will be this coming Thursday, June 8. We will continue to do donation drives. Since January, 13,270 items have been donated, and 7,267 items have been distributed. And from those donations, more donation events are on the horizon, and we will continue to accept donations on a regular basis. For our goal of building capacity to address the crisis, we will continue to evaluate properties at the port and across the city that can support additional services and programming. We will continue to finalize plans and permitting so we can begin construction activities on city-led capital improvement projects with a specific focus on the projects that Eric presented on earlier. We will continue community outreach and engagement planning to engage with folks around all of these capital improvement projects. And we're going to collaborate with Long Beach education institutions to work towards a convening of education institutions and early childhood providers. And finally, increasing interim and long-term housing access. We're going to continue to connect with housing providers in order to boost housing access for people who are experiencing homelessness or who are precariously housed. We will continue working on identifying a long-term emergency shelter site. At the interfaith convening, we will connect with leaders about how they can potentially support interim and long-term housing opportunities. And we will continue to review sites for a potential Home Key Round 3 project. So this concludes our report, and we are available for questions. Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much for that presentation. Can you just go back to slide All right. Just, you know, before I open it up for council members' questions, I just wanted to highlight this slide. That's $20.9 million and four concrete projects in the pipeline right now for construction, summer 2023. When people ask, "Why is it so expensive to address this issue?" A big part is building the capacity to do so. You can't get people off the street and put a roof over their head without building the roofs. It's just that simple, and that's an expensive process. So when people say, "Where's the money go?" There it is. All right. So we need to do more, obviously, but I think this is something that we should certainly highlight. This is significant work, and each of these projects took time to even get to this point. When you look at Luxury Inn or the Youth Navigation Center, they take time to get there. Youth Navigation Center was, you know, one-time funds on a one-time allocation from the state. That takes time to get to that place. But once we have a youth drop-in center in our own community, that's the backbone to do a whole lot more, like explore how we can coordinate a more robust infrastructure for transition-age youth and make commitments to ending youth homelessness in our communities. So these are strategic investments that will significantly enhance our capacity and our ability to move people off the street. So I just wanted to highlight that. But this was great progress in the last two weeks as well. Lots of work. I'm glad that we are doing these two-week updates. But as we approach, as we head into, you know, in July, we should be approaching six months since we did the deadline, I mean, since we did the proclamation. I think we need to do a six-month update with numbers, and this is what we've done, and this is how we executed on short-term and immediate-term goals to show our progress. Because in our strategy, we outlined zero-to-two-month immediate. We completed all of those goals. And now we're in the two-to-six-month, and we're making great progress on every one of those goals. The public needs to know that there is a plan, and there's a strategy here, and you're doing a great job at executing that strategy. But in order to get to where we want to go, this is a 12- to 24-month process to build out the capacity where we want it to be. So I think a six-month update makes sense. Councilmember Oranga?
Thank you for the update. Thank you, staff, for the update. I just want to express my gratitude for getting the navigation center off the ground, being seen in this summer, located in the West End, I guess it wasn't mentioned. So I want to thank you guys for the navigation center. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Exode.
I also want to say thank you, staff, for a great update. And I just wanted to highlight two things. One was for the public health nurses. That has been a consistent conversation we've had around staffing. So that is fantastic to hear that our efforts have paid off, and we have filled all of those positions. And I, as a fellow North Long Beach council member, I just love the idea of being able to turn a motel that was a blight and a nuisance legitimately to the community into something that is an asset and something that is going to allow us to address our issues of unhoused and provide people housing. And so I think that's just a great story. So, thank you.
Well said. I love those renderings. Those look great. You know, I lived right next to Luxury Inn for a while. It's never looked that good, I'll tell you. Councilmember Duggan?
Thank you for the update. I just have a couple of questions. One related to the report tonight. Maybe I missed it. How many total beds will this provide?
These four projects listed on the slide, these are a total of 222 beds. But just note that 99 at the former Best Western are in operation right now. But, you know, that came in through an earlier phase of Project Home Key.
Thank you. And a general question. How many beds do we have available right now in the city?
We have approximately 1,300 beds available once these are online. We did have some beds come offline that the county was operating through Project Home Key. Those are in the process of being converted into permanent supportive housing. So that includes the old Holiday Inn at Anaheim and Atlantic, and then the old Motel 6 at 7th and PCH. So those will be converted to PSH, and people will have permanent apartments. So it'll largely be an even outcome once these projects are finished. So right now, we have about 1,150. This will bring us back up close to that 1,300 mark.
And how many beds are actually available today?
Would have to look and confirm, but the ones that we have data that are publicly funded, this morning, there were probably about 12 or 15 available within our portfolio.
And those are not with vouchers, the 12 to 15? Is that correct?
Correct.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And are the private shelters factored in that number, the rescue mission-type operations?
Yeah, there are some things that we don't get a daily update on, so I don't know the exact what's available at those sites today. We get daily updates on the ones that we fund or that are funded through other public means.
Right. Okay, good. Councilman Austin?
Thank you so much. And I'd just like to join in the chorus and say thank you.
Thank you so much, and I'd just like to join in the chorus and say thank you to staff. I know you guys have been working pretty diligently for the last several months, I mean, actually, the last couple of years, on these plans. And on behalf of the residents in District 8, I'll just say that the upgrades planned, the renderings for the luxury end are very impressive, and I, for one, I appreciate the investment. I'm glad that the city council made the decision to make that investment, to take that risk because it is certainly a, it's going to make an aesthetic difference on that corridor. And it's also going to complement much of the work that's already happened over the last several months with the infrastructure improvements, the improvements in lighting. I know our residents really appreciate the attention that we've been able to pay to that particular area of our city over the last few months. So thank you so much for that, and let's keep it up. I'm also a big fan of the tiny homes. I think they are, they're much nicer than we envisioned that they would be, but I think they're going to be, they're going to provide dignity for those who are staying in those spaces and also offer us some flexibility with our homeless outreach program. So, thank you.
Councilwoman Zendejas.
Thank you again. Thank you so much, staff, for the incredible work that you do every single day. One of the questions that I get asked most from my residents is, "How is the partnership between us and L.A. County going?", so I was wondering if you could provide a short update on that? Maybe things we're working on, what we've done?
All right, that's a good question. I'll start, and then Paul's going to finish, but we continue to meet with L.A. County on a regular basis. We've had ongoing conversations around our outreach efforts in collaboration with outreach from L.A. County, the Sheriff's Department, L.A. Public Works, all of the areas that are cross-jurisdictional that land here in Long Beach. So we are continuing to work on our MOU so that we can clean and outreach in specific areas that would be labeled county, but they're landing here in Long Beach. And then we also continue to partner with LASSA and the CEO's office around other Measure H-related activities. So I'll turn it over to Paul so he can continue.
I think I have a whole lot to add. I mean, we are meeting regularly, as Teresa said. We meet every other week with the surrounding county departments that have interjurisdictional land within Long Beach to make sure that we're coordinating, and then we continue to put forward requests around programming, and we feel those conversations are being heard, and we are expecting some additional funding in the near future. They have been supporting with the continuation of our extension at 702 and providing funding for the majority of the services there, so we feel that they're being responsive and listening to stuff that we bring forward and expect some more opportunities in the near future in partnership with the county.
Thank you. Councilwoman Kerr.
Yes, thank you to the team for continuing to report back. So this is the 11th update, and I think you've covered many different areas, from public health to supportive services to the mobile units and things that are happening on the ground. And for me, it's really important, this piece about talking about more beds, because at the end of the day, we started this so that fewer people are experiencing homelessness. And it isn't an either-or. It has to be the both-and. So all of the services that our amazing teams and folks that we contract with have been providing to folks on the street, if someone says yes, we need beds for them to go to. So thank you for giving us an update on this really critical part of wanting people to have the resources that they need, but being in a space where they can receive them well, do what they need to do, and move on from some of these are temporary solutions. A tiny home isn't a forever solution. Permanent supportive housing is a forever solution. So I'm grateful that you continue to remind us and the public that it has to be this comprehensive approach of health and services, and it has to be more beds. It has to be housing of all kinds, temporary and permanent. So thanks for the great update.
Thank you. Councilwoman Supernaw.
Thank you, and thank you for the report. As long as Paul Duncan referenced the 4th District's Motel 6, former county facility, when available, if our office could get like just a one-pager or some type of synopsis of what's going in, and maybe some contact information there, that would be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Sorrow.
Thank you, Mayor. I too thank you for the presentation that you've been providing and all the work that's been done to bring this, all the work forward. I just had a question about, while we do have, you know, we bring forward the projects that is about to launch or start in the summer, can you share that? That's not it, right? We have more projects in the pipeline. I know we can't talk about specifics, but I think in making sure that we're looking at every possible way to find more shelter and housing, can you just at least, maybe that's your next step, I'm jumping on it, but I just wanted to make sure that we never stop looking and considering ways to increase housing opportunities.
Yes, we certainly have another one that we're working on. We hope to be in front of you fairly shortly, maybe even as soon as next week, to talk a little bit about that. But yes, we have been expanding. We've expanded dramatically through the pandemic, and these are just the next level of housing. It's all about having a place for people. When they accept services, we need to have a place, and that allows us to do things like, you know, enforce under the municipal code and all the things that we get asked to do. It's when we have the ability for housing and to make that offer, that's why it's so critical.
Thank you, because I do want to touch on what Councilmember Supernaw shared, that we are looking at ways of distributing opportunity, increase housing. While I'm very happy to see that we have these in the North West Side, I want to make sure we're looking and exploring in other sites throughout the cities. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Great questions from the council, and I'll tell you, you know, what I've heard about making sure that we're clear to the public that, yes, these are interim beds, and there's a need for interim beds. There's also a real need for permanent supportive housing. There's needs for affordable housing at every income level, and, you know, it will be expensive, but these are not just the priorities of our city. We have to coordinate with our county, our region, our state, our federal government in order to make sure that we achieve all of the above solutions. And I mentioned it at our last update that we are participating in the L.A. County Affordable Housing Solutions Agency. That's the new regional agency that's charged with exploring ways to produce more affordable housing and to keep people in their homes. And at our first meeting, and Councilmember Kerr is my alternate on that board, at that meeting, I was elected vice chair, first vice chair, which gives us a real opportunity to be at the table on the executive team as the region talks about specifically resources to help cities produce housing at scale. And so this is the way that we're engaging here locally. We're also positioning ourselves regionally to be successful in the long term. So thank you so much. We all have to do all of our work to make this happen, but let's continue to head down this trajectory. Is there any public comment on this item? Okay, seeing none, members, please cast your vote.
The motion is carried.
All right. Our city attorney's been waiting very anxiously. Would you like to provide an update from closed session?
Thank you so much. I'd like to report that we have nothing to report from closed session. Thank you.
Riveting. Riveting. Thank you. Okay, now we'll go to hearing number 22, please.
Item 22 is a report from Development Services, recommendation to receive supporting documentation into the record and conclude the public hearing, adopt resolution approving and certifying the environmental impact report, state clearinghouse and associated findings, adopt resolution replacing the current noise element with the updated noise element of the Long Beach general plan, and declare ordinance implementing associated amendments to the noise ordinance read for the first time and laid over to the next regular meeting of the City Council, City Y, and this item requiring an oath.
Thank you. Before we do the oath, we have a recusal.
Yes, Councilmember Exode, I have to recuse because I was part of the deliberation on Planning Commission when I was part of that body.
Please stand for those of you who are going to testify on the item, and raise your right You and each of you do solemnly state that the testimony you may give in the cause now and pending before this body shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God. You may be seated. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Let's turn it over to staff.
Yes, Mayor and council, this is a public hearing for the update to the city's housing element, one of the seven mandatory elements required by state law. I'd like to introduce Allison Spindler, our Planning Manager, and she'll give a presentation for this action.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. We're glad to be before you this evening at the culmination of a multi-year effort to update the city's noise element and associated amendments to the noise ordinance. I'd like to introduce the project planner, Megan Coverruvias, who will walk us through a presentation.
Thank you, Allison. Good evening, Mayor, and members of City Council. Tonight, before you use a presentation on the noise element and noise ordinance update, some background and context on the item. The noise element is one of the mandated elements or chapters in the city's general plan pursuant to state law. The Long Beach General Plan noise element was first adopted in 1975 and has never been updated. Since then, the city's physical makeup, population, regional context, and the regulatory guidance around noise has changed significantly. The noise element update process has been underway since 2017 and has included robust public engagement and technical analysis. To continue, the proposed noise element update would ensure the city's policy framework reflects changes in the city's urban fabric and its landscape while identifying new strategies and policies to maintain healthy, livable neighborhoods for all residents. The intent of the noise element update is to replace the 1975 document. The noise element is a broad, long-range process that helps inform future land use and development decisions. A draft plan has been available since June of 2019. A revised draft was released in March of 2021. The most recent draft was made available for public comment in October 2022 and concluded in December of 2022. The first noise element study session with Planning Commission took place in 2017. In October of 2021, the item was presented to Planning Commission for adoption. Planning Commission continued the item and directed staff to conduct a further study of special events and regulations around noise in mixed-use areas. Additional research, cross-departmental coordination, and planner refinement took place in 2022, and a revised plan was made available for public comment from October 14, 2022 through December 1, 2022. The latest public review draft reflects edits to the plan and the ordinance, including enhancements to Section 8.80.030 regarding administration and enforcement of the noise ordinance. After the revised plan was released, staff presented two study sessions at Planning Commission on the updated plan in October and December 2022. On March 2, 2023, the Planning Commission voted to recommend the noise element and related noise ordinance amendments to the Long Beach City Council. Planning Commission took action to modify city staff's recommendation by splitting the motion into two separate parts. The reason for the split vote was because the commission felt that separate consideration of the noise ordinance update was warranted based on public feedback regarding the desire for it to further address noise generated from special events. Planning Commission recognized the fact that special events noises regulated through a different title of the Long Beach Municipal Code than that which was before the commission. The commission ultimately voted to recommend both the plan and the ordinance amendments to City Council. Project overview. As a quick reminder, the noise element is a required element or a chapter of the city's general plan as required under state law. The primary purpose is to ensure that permanent sources of noise are effectively considered in future land use decisions. The noise element establishes policies that will guide how noise and land use compatibility are addressed throughout the city. The state guides us to look at noise sources that occur regularly in the same location, including non-stationary sources such as traffic and stationary sources like generators. The noise elements implemented by the noise ordinance under Chapter 8.80, even though they are two separate documents. The noise element is comprised of six chapters. Specifically, we will focus on Chapter 5, the noise plan, and how it creates a livable environment in the city. Chapter 5, the noise plan, is organized in six areas seen on the screen and identifies a total of 16 strategies and 108 policies to implement the vision of a healthy, livable noise environment in Long Beach. We now transition to an overview of the noise element update, public outreach, and engagement process. The public outreach and engagement occurred from 2017 throughout 2019. It is comprised of engagement strategies such as the creation of the project website dedicated to all noise element update information and materials, social media outreach with the hashtag #ListenUpLongBeach. Listen Up Long Beach is a crowd-sourced digital mapping tool for the community to report on local noise issues by posting location-based photos and leaving comments online either by computer or smartphone. Also, there was a city-hosted webpage, emails, Facebook, and Twitter. In April of 2017, there was also the first Planning Commission study session. Continuing to expand on the public outreach and engagement, the engagement continued with stakeholder meetings that included internal and external stakeholders, city departments, and local agencies, including police department, special events, noise control office, animal care services, Public Works, the port, the airport, and Long Beach Unified School District. The outreach also included focus groups that included public health officials, professionals, environmental justice advocates, bar and restaurant operators, construction industry The outreach and engagement process also included open houses and community meetings. On October 17 of 2018, Development Services held a focus group on special events and outdoor noise. May 30, 2019, Development Services held the noise element open house. September 26 of 2019, based on city council and public feedback, a special event sound study was conducted and results presented at this meeting. These results I will touch on later in the future PowerPoint slides. Also, Development Services attended multiple Ocean Residence Community Association meetings throughout the multi-year process. Now we transition to the noise element update process. The draft plan was released in 2019 with revised drafts released in 2021 and 2022. Additional policies and implementation actions related to special events have been added to the document over time. The environmental impact report review and comment took place in 2021. The most recent version, the October 22 draft noise element document, which you all have before you tonight, was made available for public comment from October 14 to December 1, 2022. A spectrum of oral public comments supporting and opposing the item have been heard and acknowledged, and the document has been revised multiple times. Individuals who have provided public input have been heard, many of whom have been heard numerous times. We have reviewed the proposed edits to the noise element, and I will provide an overview of the accompanying proposed edits entitled 8 Health and Safety under Chapter 8.80 of the Long Beach Municipal Code to implement the noise element update. The 2019 land use element update established a number of mixed-use place types that delineate areas that are designed to allow a mix of commercial, residential, and other compatible land uses that will be integrated. The proposed noise element update builds on these place types. Therefore, to bring the noise ordinance into alignment with the LUE and noise element updates, the primary proposed amendments to the noise ordinance are to update the noise district map to reflect the mixed-use place types and to update the texts and tables accordingly. The first noise ordinance amendment highlights the proposed changes to the map that are comprised of updates to the boundaries of District 2 of the noise district map to better reflect and be consistent with the 2019 land use element. Here, we have the existing noise district map on your left and proposed noise district map to your right. Currently, noise district 2 consists of areas that contain predominantly commercial uses with other land use types also present. The proposed update to the noise district map expands district 2 boundaries to better capture areas that currently are characterized by mixed-use development or a plan for mixed uses and commercial uses in the future through the land use element. or are planned for mixed uses and commercial uses in the future through the land use element. As you can see, circled in red on your right, the proposed noise district map expands district 2 boundaries that increases a 3.7% or 1.96 square miles. Again, that is consistent with the updated land use element and proposed noise element. The expanded areas in the noise district 2 will encompass additional areas that tend to be high-intensity mixed-use areas. This map shows the proposed addition to district 2 in color, and the color is coded to the underlying land use element place type. For the second noise ordinance amendment, the proposed updates to the exterior noise limit table are comprised solely of clarifying that district 2 includes mixed use. There are no proposed increases to the noise level maximums allowed in the code. Similarly, for interior noise limits, the only change is to add mixed use, seen in the column 2, as a type of use that has regulations for interior noise limits and proposes accompanying limits. The third proposed noise ordinance amendment is to update administration and enforcement procedures under 8.80.030 in order to increase accountability, transparency, and to create a structure for considering future improvements on a regular basis. This modification is proposed to update administrative process in a manner to better clarify that all departments with noise regulation responsibility may, based on circumstance and need, carry out the duties of the noise control officer to help ensure that noise complaints from the public are timely and adequately addressed. Additionally, based on public input, staff proposed a new addition reflecting that the city is to review provisions of this ordinance on an annual basis. Giving the public comments and concerns regarding special events noise, I am going to give an overview of how special events noise is regulated. Special events are not regulated by the noise ordinance under Chapter 8.80, which we have been discussing throughout the PowerPoint. Rather, they are regulated according to their temporary and unique characteristics. As previously discussed, Chapter 8.80 regulates noise. However, under 8.80.280, entertainment events are exempt, as you can see here on the slide. Entertainment events under the provisions of this chapter shall not apply to occasional outdoor or indoor gatherings, public dances, shows, and sporting and entertainment events. Therefore, based on this definition, special events falls under this exemption. Instead, entertainment and similar activities are regulated under Chapter 5.72, known as entertainment and similar activities, where the permitting process includes both standard conditions as well as regulates events according to their temporary and unique characteristics. Therefore, special events is regulated by Chapter 5.72 and not by Chapter 8.80 that regulates noise. More information on special events as a temporary noise source. Special events are classified as a temporary noise source. Like most jurisdictions, the city does not identify special events as a permanent noise source. The Office of Planning and Research General Plan Guidelines state that the noise element should address permanent stationary noise sources such as power plants or generators and non-stationary sources like highways and freeways as identified by local agencies that contribute to the noise environment. The city does not identify short-term, temporary, and seasonal special events as permanent. Regular noise sources consist of typical noise patterns based on static criteria. Each permitting process event is regulated in according to its temporary and unique characteristics through the special events office. I also wanted to point out a few other places where special events are addressed in the zoning code. Section 21.53, as it relates to temporary uses of the zoning code, addresses the occurrence of special events such as carnivals, fiestas, and other exhibition or celebrations in certain zoning districts. And the coastal zone, coastal permitting may be required depending on the location of the special event and timing of the event to ensure the maintenance and preservation of coastal access in accordance with the Coastal Act and the city's local coastal program. City staff, Office of Special Events, and the California Coastal Commission are working together on a local coastal program amendment to amend language in the local coastal program regarding public events at Alameda's Beach. This amendment would introduce policies related to occurrence of events and best management practices to ensure the policies of the local Coastal Act are adhered to. The city's local program is a separate document from the noise element, and will have additional opportunities for outreach and public hearings. Special events in the coastal zone. The coastal zone is divided into three jurisdictional areas. First, Coastal Commission Original Permit District Jurisdiction; Two, Appealable Area; and Three, the City Coastal Zone. The Grand Prix is subject to a separate Coastal Commission permit that is renewed on a five-year basis. Here's a closer look at the coastal zone map. Areas shown in red are under the permitting authority of the California Coastal Commission, which typically includes the sandy beach areas of the city's coastline. Special events in these areas are required to demonstrate compliance with the California Coastal Commission's policies for temporary events. This slide and the next slide highlight varied site venues layouts for special events. Special events range from large-scale events to smaller activities at various locations of the waterfront area. When the same location is being used, special events staff work to change up the layout of an event to minimize impacts. This is another slide to depict images on how special events employs varied site layouts to reduce the potential impact of sound on any one receptor. Special events noise study. In April of 2018, at the request of City Council, based on public input, special events and filming office conducted a special events noise study concurrent to the noise element update process. The study evaluated current regulations and the procedures related to the noise generated from special events while also looking at case studies on cities with the comparable range of special events. The city's special events and filming bureau hosted a community meeting on September 26 of 2019 to present the findings of the special events noise study. The key study findings of the noise study was able to identify additional strategies, technologies, and procedures to explore as next steps, as well the findings also informed development of the noise element strategy number 13 related to special events and associated policies. The discussion now transitioned on various implementation measures carried out by special events. Special events publishes a public calendar with notifications displayed on the city website. Special events, when a permit application is submitted to special events, it is circulated to various city departments for review and approval with conditions. There's also an after-hours events line to respond to noise complaints. A list of ways special events does sound mitigation is through: sound readings conducted with calibrated sound meters. City staff trained in sound engineering and conducts regular sound monitoring and reporting at special events. The use of sound boxes monitored by a third party. Also, the addition of sound mitigation such as acoustical sound barriers. Future anticipation to look forward to with special events is they are working on a process and system to be able to provide a sound reading available in real time, and that will be visible to constituents. Special events will also continue to monitor advances in sound technology that would create additional options for future strategies. In terms of the required environmental review pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act and the state SEQA guidelines, the city as lead agency prepared a draft and final environmental impact report. The draft EIR was released on March 23 of 2021, and the public comment period ended on June 14, 2021. A final EIR, including a response to comments, was provided to the Planning Commission at the October 2021 hearing. Recent minor edits to the noise element and noise ordinance are minor and do not require recirculation of the EIR. As I begin to wrap up, I wanted to share again this chart that lists various types of noise sources and concerns, summarizes key regulations such as what hours certain noise generating activities can take place by law, and the appropriate parties to contact based on the type of noise complaint. On the bottom right of the slide, you'll find the hyperlink to where this chart can be found on the city's website. The public hearing noticing for this item was published in the Long Beach Press-Telegram and Gruening Gazette. Notices were also provided to all city libraries and posted at City Hall. The public hearing was also posted on the Development Services Department's website and distributed through the city's Link LB email blast system and noise element interested parties list. Before I dive into staff's recommendation, as a friendly reminder, Planning Commission took action to modify city staff's recommendation by splitting the motion into two separate parts. The reason for the split vote was because the commission felt that the separate consideration of the noise ordinance update was warranted based on public feedback regarding the desire for it to further address noise generated from special events. Planning Commission recognized the fact that special events noise is regulated through a different title of the Long Beach Municipal Code. The commission ultimately voted to recommend both the plan and the ordinance amendments to the City Council. The current recommendation tonight is staff recommends that the City Council adopt an ordinance implementing associate amendments to the noise ordinance, adopt a resolution approving and certifying the environmental impact report and associate findings, adopt a resolution replacing the current noise element with the updated noise element of the Long Beach General Plan, and adopt a resolution authorizing the Director of Development Services to submit amendments to the Long Beach Municipal Code to the California Coastal Commission for approval. This concludes my presentation tonight. In addition to those of us at the staff table, we have our noise and vibration specialists, JT Stephens, along with Ashley Davis with LSA. We have Diane Bathgate with RRM Design, who worked on the noise element document and policies. From the city's health department, we have Judith Wong with the Environmental Health Bureau. And we have Leah Solerzano with Special Events and Filming. Thank you.
So, Mayor and Council, I know that was a long report. Just, there's been a lot of science, a lot of data, a lot of community outreach that's gone into this. This is something we haven't done since the 70s, so it is a really, really big report. We did want to make sure that you have all the information, the public has all that information. And so, we know there's going to be a number of questions tonight, and our team of experts are standing by. So, thank you very much for that.
All right. Thank you so much. We have eight members of the public signed up to speak. Catherine Franklin, Jim Gooden, Pat Mills, Claire Hels, Linda Shoal, Margaret Mostafa, Belenine Nash, Bella Chu, and Anna Christensen. Please come forward. Catherine, go on once. Okay.
Well, it sounds like I'm almost too late, but anyway. Here's my statement. An updated ordinance to protect residents whose homes abut commercial activity, large and small, is clearly needed in Long Beach. Many homes are outside of residential neighborhoods. In my case, I am subjected to a loud, unrelenting drone that continues without interruption throughout the entire time the business next to me is open. It begins at 6:00 a.m. and can continue as late as 11:00 p.m. A narrow alley next to my home amplifies the sound, which could be coming from an exhaust system or whatever. When I was referred to the health department, I was told that noise of this sort is regulated before 7:00 a.m. and after 10:00 p.m. And that's of little use to me because of the sheer hours that my problem goes on. I also use more electricity to light the darker side and quieter side of my home throughout the day. I am retired, so do not spend huge chunks of my time elsewhere. I've heard from other affected neighbors, including one man who worked in construction for years, and said that such excesses can and really are supposed to be mitigated. We all must live together, and I understand the need to make a business work. But it is unacceptable to expect neighbors to bear that heavy burden. I trust my example underscores the need to update the noise ordinance to cover such cases. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Jim Gooden.
Thank you. Jim Gooden, 600 East Ocean Boulevard. I want to applaud the noise element in two aspects. At least five times it states that in managing noise, the city needs to prioritize the well-being of residents. It also states that the city needs to ensure that affected residents have an opportunity to participate in decisions that impact their health by facilitating the involvement of residents in all aspects of the planning process. However, I am opposed to the noise ordinance as it is written. During my 26 years of living on Ocean Boulevard, the amplified noise events have become much more numerous and much louder. From the late 90s until about 2015, the entertainment events in the waterfront venues were few, fewer than a dozen a year, and much quieter, soft music wafting into my home, not at all intrusive. Then it changed. Very loud rock and rap groups with vibrating bass with stages just a few dozen yards from our homes, eight to 12 hours a day, two to four consecutive days, that completely disrupted the lives of us living, facing the waterfront on Ocean Boulevard. During these events, we cannot talk on the telephone, hold conversations in our homes, watch TV, or operate our home office businesses. We have repeatedly been told that the noise ordinance does not apply to special events that have been permitted by the city. However, the noise generated on city property should, without restriction, protrude into our property, which has maximum noise limits. We have noise limits for our residences, which are not adhered to. We need to add this to the noise ordinance. We have read and heard the many promises to better manage the outdoor entertainment, but we can no longer rely on the good intentions of city staff. The law must be changed to ensure the city complies. We heard about how special events are temporary. They are not temporary at the waterfront. We have an event almost every weekend from April to August. That is not temporary. They play games and say, well, it's a different event this week, and a different event that week. So, each one of those individual events are temporary, but to us, who are facing the music week after week after week, it is not temporary. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Pat Mills.
Good evening. My name is Pat Mills. I also live on the periphery of the Elephant Lot, which hosts a lot of the concerts. And I would like to say I am very upset because I don't think those of us who live in that neighborhood are treated equally with other citizens of Long Beach. We are subjected to decibel levels, vibrating bass, all sorts of, you know, violations of what the state expects the sound to be when it reaches your home. We can't even call the police or the health department because they say they can't do anything because of the special events exception. I like concerts. I want them to continue. But what I don't want is that when there is a concert with really window-rattling bass in my house for hours at a time, every weekend, I don't think I should have to leave my apartment, or, you know, we have double-pane windows. What else can you do? I just want to know why we are not allowed to call the police. Why is this exempt from monitoring by the police? The health department says they can't do anything? Police department says they can't do anything because it's covered by such and such a part of the documents? That's not right. I don't think we should be ignored. I think we should be given the same deference to our health. I'm a cancer patient. I get treatments all the time. I want to be able to lie down in my bedroom and not have my heart beating more than it should and not being able to call somebody on the telephone, watch TV, or any of that. I'm not looking forward to this during the summer. It will be happening. And I just want, I would like just to be able to call police and have them do something. That's my, that's what I would like to do. That's, uh, that's my, that's what I would like to do.
Thank you. Next speaker is Claire.
My name is Claire Heiss, and I'm a retired engineer. And like 25% of adults 65 years or older, I have diabetes. I moved from the Bay Area to be closer to my family, and I wanted to live in an area where I could walk to events and enjoy activities in a very vibrant downtown area. I bought a condo at 850 East Ocean Boulevard. It's on the 13th floor, and it faces the waterfront. After I moved in, I renovated the bathrooms, the kitchen, and spent a lot of money on window treatments as well. After I sunk all that money in, the music festivals began. The loud noise was such that, especially from the bass, that items on my shelves vibrated. I called the police. They said they couldn't do anything. I called the city many times, asking them to do something about it, to turn down the level of noise. They did not. I tried to adjust. I got special earplugs, the type you use when you shoot guns, to try to block out the noise. It didn't work. I got earmuffs that are supposed to cancel noise, and it didn't work. I brought heavy-duty curtains to try to absorb some of the sounds. That didn't work. I invested very heavily in triple-pane windows that were supposed to really block out the
glad to be able to speak. My name is Linda Shoal, and greetings, Mayor and Council members.
sound, and that didn't work.
I too live next to the Convention Center parking lot and the adjacent events park.
The only thing it did was it stopped the vibration of items on my shelf.
And I've been living there for 25 years.
The long excess noise exasperates diabetes.
There's a lot of events that are wonderful. You know, you know they're there. There's 10,000 people out there. There's the bike races. It's wonderful.
Despite the amount of money I put into this unit and the loss that I took, I had to sell
It doesn't disturb you in your home. But there are some events that are not good neighbors. They're bad neighbors.
it and move to another part of the city because my health was in such jeopardy.
And as you've heard from the people speaking before me, literally, the building walls vibrate, the glass doors vibrate, our bodies vibrate.
Please amend the Long Beach Municipal Code 8.80.280 so that by the time amplified noise
And I don't know if you can imagine what that feels like. We often think, okay, you can go to a concert, go for two hours or so, wear earplugs, leave.
from the city-permitted musical festivals reaches residents, it will be within the noise
You cannot do this. This is your house. And by the time we reach this age, we want to live in our house. The state of California says we're entitled to live in peace in our house.
limits. Can this be done?
I don't want just quiet.
As an engineer, I tell you, it can be done, and please do it.
I'm not looking for total quiet. I'm looking for the ability to live in relative peace in the house. So what our neighborhood did is we said, hey, look at all these beautiful documents,
Thank you. Next, thank you.
there's all this outreach.
Next is Linda Shoal.
Where do you see complaints that we've lodged and the solutions implemented for that? You haven't. We've been doing this for seven years. Seven of you are new, or six of you are new, haven't been here before. And so you wouldn't know that we've been doing this for that long. And there were people before us that were doing it for that long. So what we did is we documented what the noise was from 2017 to 2019. We did the concerts. Seventy-three days of excessive noise, double the established noise ordinance, double. And so this says that special events are exempt from the noise limit. Why have a noise limit? Why do you even have residential limits at all? Well, of course, it's because noise is hazardous. You might think of noise as being similar to smoking, because you go around and say, well, some people like the noise, and they do. Well, some people like smoking, and they do. But the issue is not whether or not people like it or they don't like it. The issue is that it's hazardous whether you like it or not. And for noise, above a certain limit, it's hazardous whether we like it or not. And so we're all here. We all bring an expertise and an ability and a position of influence to be able to make things better. I believe the staff has done a really good job at making beautiful presentations with a lot of important information, particularly the comments about events being important to prioritize the well-being of residents. So I'm asking to that you amend the noise ordinance to require that special events comply with established noise limits by the time the noise reaches our residences. So if you want to have a concert out there in the parking lot, go for it. Have a good time. But just control the noise so that it is acceptable by the time it reaches our homes. And we know it's possible because there's a lot of concerts that are able to do it. So, thank you.
Next is Margaret Mustafa.
I come in praise of the updated noise element. Noise is defined as disturbing sound. Noise is disturbing when it interferes with conversation, interferes with sleep, or interferes with the quality of life. The EPA says there is a direct link between noise and health. Problems related to noise include hearing loss, cardiovascular problems such as heart problems and high blood pressure, digestive problems such as diabetes, and countless other adverse health effects. California law says excessive noise is a serious hazard to the public health. All Californians are entitled to a peaceful and quiet environment without the intrusion of noise, which may be hazardous to their health or welfare. The noise element channels the U.S. Department of Health and California law. It repeatedly says noise events that disturb the peace of residents can lead to negative health occurrences. It also repeatedly says, when the city has special events, the health and well-being of residents needs to be prioritized. I am 82 years old. I own a condominium at 850 East Ocean. My unit doesn't face the waterfront. Units on the other side of the hall do. After I moved in, I learned that people whose units face the waterfront were being disturbed in their homes by loud noise from music festivals on the waterfront. They repeatedly asked the city to tone it down, but the noise became worse each year. Then, in the summer of 2019, repeatedly, the bass sound from the music festivals on the waterfront came through the unit across from me, across the hall, into my unit, and made my chest hurt. I called the police, just like you would in that situation, and they weren't able to help because the city permitted it. Later, a medical doctor explained to me that what was happening was, like when you hit a balloon and it vibrates, the air pressure from the bass was hitting my lungs and making my, my lungs vibrate in my chest. I knew I had to move to protect myself. I moved. But what about those who are still there? Most of them, like me, are senior citizens. I think everybody speaking tonight is a senior citizen. The noise element repeatedly says that during special events, the well-being of residents needs to be prioritized. Please amend Long Beach Municipal Code 880.280 so that by the time amplified noise from city-permitted music festivals reaches residences, it will be within the noise limits. This will not shut down the music festivals. Instead, it will make things work for everyone. It's not either or, it's both. People will still come to the city to enjoy good music by the beach. And residents will be protected. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Belanine Ash Bella Chu.
My name is Belanine Ash Bella Chu. I am a retired nurse anesthetist. I have been suffering with this noise for the past seven years. We have been repeatedly presented to the city, no solution. It's getting worse every time. Two of the noise element goals are making Long Beach a livable, healthy community and minimizing exposure to excessive noise. Municipal Code 8.80.280 conflicts with the noise element. It allows the city to exempt entertainment from the noise limit. Consequently, amplified noise from city-permitted entertainment makes our homes unlivable and threatens our health and well-being. Please update this code. Please amend it so that by the time amplified noise from entertainment reaches residents, it will be within the noise limits. This will not shut down the music festivals. Instead, it will make things work for everyone. It's not either or, it's both. People will still come to the city to enjoy good music by the beach. And residents will be protected. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Belanine Ash Bella Chu.
My name is Belanine Ash Bella Chu. I am a retired nurse anesthetist. I have been suffering with this noise for the past seven years. We have been repeatedly presented to the city, no solution. It's getting worse every time. Two of the noise element goals are making Long Beach a livable, healthy community and minimizing exposure to excessive noise. Municipal Code 8.80.280 conflicts with the noise element. It allows the city to exempt entertainment from the noise limit. Consequently, amplified noise from city-permitted entertainment makes our homes unlivable and threatens our health and well-being. Please update this code. Please amend it so that by the time amplified noise from entertainment reaches residents, it will be within the noise limits. This will make our homes livable every day of the year. Stop our exposure to excessive noise in our homes. Give us the same rights that other residents enjoy protection from excessive noise. We are tired. Every time there is something going by Convention Center, I have to go to a motel and spend my money. If, I don't know, if any one of you live around Ocean Boulevard, maybe you understand what we're talking about. The noise is very, very, very disturbing. It's not only a few hours. Three days, four days in a row, from 7:00 o'clock to 10:00 PM. Kids cannot sleep. Elderly people are crying because they don't have any time to rest in their own house. Please do something to help us. We have been trying to reach the healthy, livable area for the past seven years. Please, please help us. We are not against your business. You can do what you want, but limit the noise to keep us healthy. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Our final speaker is Anna Christensen.
I will also be speaking during public comment regarding a specific event, but it is pretty stunning to hear this testimony about noise. One thing that was not studied in the very, a special study of Special Events Department was the sound of fireworks. None of the case studies that were looked at involve fireworks. None of the people tonight are even talking about fireworks. The, the noise level is 65 decibels normally. Anything over 80 injures your hearing, permanent hearing loss. Fireworks start at 150 decibels. We have, many fireworks shows, we have had many fireworks shows downtown, including regular firework shows all summer long from the Queen Mary. But I want to speak to you about a specific fireworks show that we cannot find any information out to the state, and that is the fireworks show for July 4th, 2023, that is being advertised on multiple social media sites in the harbor area. We have not been able to confirm that a permit has been applied for, although as of this morning, Special Events Office said discussions were involved, but we don't know between who. We have been told that it is sponsored at different, on different of these social media sites by Harbor Breeze Cruises, the city itself, the port. But we can't get any of this confirmed. The port doesn't think they're sponsoring it, neither does Harbor Breeze Cruises. Now, this fireworks show in this particular location is a special events park, but as of a few years ago, it started being the location of major migratory birds that are covered by the Migratory Bird Act and the Coastal Act. A similar fireworks show that's more well-known, the Big Bang on the Bay, this year is required not only to have a CDP waiver, but a whole coastal development permit, very rare for an event. In addition, it's required to have a NPDES federal permit for pollution, even with all the conditions that are being placed on the Big Bang fireworks show. Nothing for the birds. The birds pictured here are the same birds that are nesting in Harry Bridges Park. We have a very simple request. Please don't shoot fireworks off underneath these nests, as was done in 2022. Don't burn the grass, don't have fireworks happening, and don't kill birds, as happened in 2022, when sparks from the fireworks landed in their very nest. But I'll talk to you more about that later. But I, I agree with these people. I, I'm, I mean, I guess I didn't ask, even think about asking for this, but certainly, special events that happen constantly, very much like pollution from, from oil drilling sites that are regular and constant, should not need multiple, multiple reports.
Thank you. Well, that satisfies public comment. We'll now take it back behind the rail. I have a motion. We need a second to continue this discussion. I mean, to go on with the discussion. We need a second on the motion. Any member of the council just push the button so we can, thank you. Council members in Dehaw, you're up.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, thank you for that long presentation, but very, very, very informative and very necessary. Also, thank you for the years of work that have gone into this presentation. I know that it's been a work in progress for, for many, many years. And one of the things that I would like clarification on, though, I know the answer, but I want to hear it from city staff, is what we are listening here to tonight, this item in particularly, does not, does not apply to special events. We're talking about the noise element plan itself. Is that correct?
Thank you for the question, council member. So, that's, that's correct. So, we're here on the noise element, which is a chapter of the general plan, and that plan is to direct and guide future land use decisions for the city. And so state law and guidance provides a lot of direction as to what we focus on and what we assess. And so this update is consistent with those regulations, with the focus on permanent land uses. So you heard some technical terms like stationary or temporary sound. And when we are talking about stationary, that's referring to sort of an ongoing land use, so the day-in-and-day-out sound characteristics. So, the point about sort of quote-unquote temporary is it's a type of sound that's, that's just measured differently to be most appropriately measured. And that's why the special events permitting process, which is under a separate title of the code, Title V, under the business title, looks at that regulatory process in a different way than when you're thinking about sound that comes from sort of the permanent day-in-and-day-out of a commercial or residential sort of land use. So for that reason, it is focused on those stationary land uses. We do have policies and programs in the document related to special events, which we touched on a little bit here, and is in response to community input. We've also made some proposals to continue to add transparency to the process, which we can talk a bit about, but your assessment is correct.
Thank you very much for that. Also, you know, this has been an ongoing issue for some of my residents, especially after redistricting, and it, I inherited this part of the district. And this has been an ongoing conversation with me and my residents on, in particular on special events. And one of the things that I would like to ask, and I know special events is, is available, and my unit might be able to answer this, but what would, what is it even feasible to even think about maybe amending this element and including, and excluding special events, or having that be regulated through another source? or having that be regulated through another source?
So, councilmember, I'm going to answer the question for you. There's a policy reason and a technical reason that we regulate permanent sound and temporary sound differently. So, a special event is by its nature special. So, there's some public dispute about how often they happen or whether there's too many events or not enough events, but they happen during one season, summer, more than another season. They happen all over the city, although the speakers were referring to events that happened here, sort of in the downtown and Alameda's Beach area. Sound at an event is measured at the point of origin of the sound, you know, sort of at the event. And there's been a lot of concern and testimony about how we do that, and is that accurate? And to that end, we've set up, you know, sort of sound boxes that very precisely measure the sound that's being created. That's how we measure special events, and we've looked at how Nashville, Austin, other major cities that are destination cities like Long Beach handle special events, and it's always handled separately. There's a technical reason for that beyond the policy reasons. We otherwise look at sound as measuring over the course of an hour, over the course of a day, over the course of a year. What is the average amount of sound that someone's exposed to? And that's what has effects on quality of life, health, different things. And we measure that over a long period of time because individual things happen in the moment where sound goes up and down. So, we know based on those measurements, we look at the whole city, and this plan, it provides us insight about future decision-making. So, there's a lot of discussion about special events, but based on the actual data and the science, those in our city that are exposed to the worst sound environment are those that are living next to our freeways. So, that tells us we need to think about that type of housing. We need to think about not citing homes as close to the freeway. We need to think about for those residents that do live close to the freeway that tend to be lower income, that tend to be persons of color. How can we help pay to double pay their windows? How can we work with Caltrans to get sound barriers? So, this noise element is about the whole city and the diversity of people that live in the city. I know one particular topic is special events, and that's an important topic, but I don't want the council to lose track of what we're talking about here, which is the citywide noise environment and how we plan and permit in a beneficial way for all of our residents.
Thank you, Director Kuntz, for that. I know that this is, continues to be a topic of hot topic of conversation. And I was wondering if you or city staff could also answer. I've heard, you know, through public comment that they can't call police or that police can't do anything about it. Can you further speak on that?
Well, anyone can call police. So, we're not controlling any resident's ability to call public safety officers and obtain service when they need it. I'm going to ask Tasha, if you want to come forward while I'm talking. We have different sizes of events. So, events are small as well, right? Like, we have small walk-run charity events, and those are special events. But for our large events, for the Grand Prix, for Pride, for the marathon, there is onsite security that works for the special event. There's a police presence assigned to the special event. And then, there is a coordination through special events with PD, and PD does respond to calls for service in addition that they receive from residents. So, there's a little bit of confusion about that. So, I'm going to ask Tasha to talk about policing and security during events.
Hi, councilmember. So, for events, we actually have police and fire and health resources onsite. So, the individuals actually responding are the individuals that are onsite housed with us. They won't get a normal patrol unit to respond because the resources are already dedicated to the event. But if there is a call that comes in for service, that call goes into the command center for the large events. Or for the smaller events, they may contact the sergeant onsite. But the sergeant and/or command post will go and address that complaint.
Thank you, Tasha. And I know that we've been working a lot together on this issue for many, many years. I was wondering if you could also include some of the things that you've been doing to mitigate this. And I know that this is talking about special events, but my correlation to this item is why it's important that we understand that it's being regulated differently, like special events and coastal events, why they're regulated differently. So, if you could speak on all the things that we have been doing, working on together to try to address this issue?
So, there's quite a bit, but we actually, this year, installed the sound monitors, which are strategically placed based on the events that we're having. They're turned on at least three days ahead of time to get an ambient reading in the area from what it would normally be down there on specific days. And then, during the event, they are set to a specific caliber, and at a certain point, they will ping everyone in the office's cellphone to let us know that the bass may have gotten too high or the sound level may have gotten too high to where we can contact a sound engineer and have that actually addressed. We've also put staff out there with handhelds that have been able to gain access to the rooftops of the buildings to measure sound with handheld equipment based on the complaints that come into the after-hours line. So, we've also established an after-hours line. While staff does not call everyone back that calls in, they are pinged every time a complaint comes in. So, they will report to that address to address sound. If it's not us addressing the sound and going to that address, it will actually be a health officer or someone from the health department that will go. We've also set up sound barriers behind the stages to limit the noise and the bleed over into the area. When we have events, the stages are strategically placed so that they are pointed away from area residents and towards the water. In some cases, we point them towards the west, towards the Pike. In the case of Marina Green, there's actually two different placements. There's one that is towards the water on the west end, and then, there's one on the water towards the east end. We have done other numerous things, like the sound study. And as technology gets more advanced, we will also include those as well. We're also looking at putting the new sound readings online from the monitors. We'll interface with our website. Since the sound monitors are fairly new, we haven't been able to do that yet, but we're trying to get there, but they are available if anyone wants them. And that is a bulk of what we're doing. We also notify all the Ocean Boulevard residents between, I think it's, I have it on here, but it goes all the way to Eighth Place. From basically Ocean Boulevard, from Pine Avenue towards Eighth Place, if the event is happening in that Convention Center parking lot. The other thing that we're doing is we have a community relations individual that is now assigned for all of the events. It's basically each promoter has their own community relations person that is available to the residents. They go to outreach meetings. So, we've done all of those things with your office as well as the residents in the downtown.
Thank you so much for that. Thank you.
Councilmember, if you have more, now would be the time. Go ahead and finish the rest of your questions.
Yes, I just, you know, wanted to know that and the feasibility of that. One of the things that, you know, the residents continue to be concerned about is that, but I do appreciate all the work that has been going into this particular area of need. And also, you know, I know that it's been, it hasn't been easy, but we've been moving along, and we've been trying to figure out things and trying to figure out ways to help, and I do appreciate that. I know that it seems very concerning to the residents that it's not good enough. One of the things that I would like to know is, and this may be for, you know, citywide, and for the all-city staff involved, is might there be a way, a possible way to maybe look for open grants that might be able to really, really help out those residents that are mostly affected by certain noise elements, certain noises, concerns that we have?
Councilmember, that's something we can look at. And this may not be what, you know, folks want to hear, but those would have to go to those most in need. So, that may not, when we look at income and different things, that may not necessarily be your residents on Ocean Boulevard. So, we have folks all over the city that are impacted by noise and environmental health. So, certainly, we can look for grants, and we always want to make funding available and assist our residents. But we can't make any commitment to you about what the outcome of that would be. But that's certainly something we can look into as staff and resources are available.
I would really appreciate that. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Councilwoman Kerr.
Yes, I just wanted to thank staff for a really intensive, comprehensive report, and not only this, but the two briefings that we had before. I know, Mr. Kuntz, on a couple of my briefings over the last few months, I've asked for continued input because we have been hearing from residents from around the city. And I want to thank you for the reminder that this is a citywide plan. When I look at the date that we last did this and realize it's closer to when I was born, that this was really necessary for the city that we're becoming and saving residents who are adjacent to some freeway corridors, understanding that that work is really important to them. So, I want to thank you for that. I want to thank the residents who have reached out to share with me. I know my staff has met with some, and we've heard from others around the 5th District. So, I just want to thank you for incredibly detailed work.
All right. Thank you. Councilwoman Sorrow.
Thank you. I also appreciate, well, you know, it's important to have a presentation like that. I know it's a little long, but for somebody that doesn't have as many special events in my district, I do have just a few questions. But I also appreciate having met with residents who've shared about their concern around the new proposed noise ordinance. So, my question is, just to clarify, does the special events temporary noise kind of source, is that not, that's not just in the coastal or ocean? It's for throughout the city, right? That that's not just applicable?
Correct. So, the ordinance applies citywide. We were just sharing the coastal information because there's further regulations in the coastal zone. And many of the speakers at this and prior meetings were Ocean Boulevard residents specifically, which is in the coastal zone.
And the second question I have is, how much? I've heard from a comment earlier that number of events have increased, more specifically in the coastal area or at least on ocean. I'm just wondering, how much have the number of events increased over time, I guess, within that area? And are there other areas where there's comparable number of events?
So, most of the events are the same. There, this year, there are two large music festivals. There was the one in February, the Cali Vibes, and then, there's another large one in September, the Country Coastal Jam. But we've also not done anything out on the beach other than the NFL event, so they're kind of replacing. There's not really an additional add or increase. Most of them are smaller events. There has been an increase in events at the Queen Mary across the water, but as for the waterfront, it's pretty much status.
And I might just add, councilmember, so there are, of course, special events citywide. And so, this question of regulation of special events and sound would have similarly detrimental impacts on things like the Cambodian New Year Festival or the MLK Parade, movies in the park, those kind of things, which, again, are special events, and because of their sort of temporary nature and different type of sound acoustics are analyzed differently.
And my last question, are there ever enough special events stringed together that it could become kind of regular-level noise ordinance? Yes.
Well, I mean, I guess, to answer your hypothetical with the hypothetical, I mean, I guess that's possible. If we had a special event on the Elephant Lot every day for four months in a row, that would be a stationary noise source. But that is not what the factual record shows. So, that is not how we're having special events. As Tasha mentioned, there's a handful of large events. There's a good number of medium and small events, and everyone perceives sound differently. So, an event in the Elephant Lot is not the same as an event the next week at Rainbow Lagoon, which is not the same as an event the week after that at the Queen Mary. But others might answer that question differently than me. They might feel that an event anywhere in the downtown waterfront is the same. But the factual record does not show that we're having high-intensity events at the same location more than a couple times a year. But to answer your question, yes, if there was a daily noise source on a location that happened every day, that's a permanent noise source. But that's not what the factual record shows.
Thank you. That's what I just wanted to clarify and understand. Thank you very much.
All right. That satisfies council's comment. I'll just thank staff. I followed the discussion. Great responses. Councilmember Zendehas, it was easy to follow along. Thank you for deploying Socratic method, just put it out there and let's get the answers. You know, noise is important. It's important quality of life, important to our quality of life in our city. I also think that it's important, and we have that conversation since, as Councilmember Kerr highlighted, we haven't updated our noise element in how many years, Christopher or Mr. Kuntz?
In 1975.
1975. A lot has changed in Long Beach since 1975. And so, as we sort of think about what the future holds, we just updated our housing element. You know, we're talking about what the 10-year plan of the downtown. We're beginning that process. I think it's important to have this document updated so we can factor that into our ongoing investments that we make into the future. I also think it's important to, and thank you, Mr. Kuntz, for just highlighting that noise, it manifests differently across the city. So, you know, we commonly hear about it in the context of flights, you know, throughout the years, flights, the flight path. But there's also, you know, challenges with respect to our Entertainment District and north and west Long Beach with homes that are adjacent to the freeways. And so, it manifests differently. Having one uniform element that sort of speaks to all of those circumstances, I think, is important for us to have. So, thank you so much. That said, we've heard from the public, we've heard from the council. Now, members, please cast your vote.
The motion is carried.
Thank you. So, we have two items requested to move up. We're going to go in this order. We have 37, Pride Month. We have 31 on Rivers and Mountains Conservancy, and then, we have general public comment. Let's go 37.
Item 37 is communication from Councilwoman Kerr. Recommendation to request city attorney to draft resolution recognizing May 22nd as Harvey Milk Day and the month of June as lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer Pride Month, and direct city manager to annually raise the LGBTQ+ Progress Pride flag at Civic Plaza. Direct city manager to update Administrative Regulation 8-18 and repeal resolution number RES-17-0055.
Thank you. You want to make your motion, councilmember? Push your button.
Yes, thank you.
Councilmember Kerr.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to amend my motion. Vice Mayor Allen and Councilwoman Zendehas have reached out and asked to co-sponsor this item, and I would happily like to add them as co-sponsors and have the record reflect that.
Noted.
Thank you. Happy Pride Month, everyone. I want to begin by thanking my staff and the City Attorney's Office, notably Taylor Anderson, for helping draft this item, and to Vice Mayor Allen and Councilwomen Zendehas for signing on in support of bringing this item to the agenda. It does a few things. It formally recognizes May 22nd as Harvey Milk Day on the city's calendar and formally recognizes June as LGBTQ+ Pride Month. It instructs the city manager, number two, to update the Administrative Regulation Display of National State or Other Flags to replace the Pride flag with the Progress Pride flag. It also asks that the city raises the Progress Pride flag at the Long Beach Civic Center and light all city assets in the rainbow colors on Harvey Milk Day and during the month of June for Pride Month. And finally, it repeals a resolution from 2017 that declared the third week in May as Long Beach LGBTQ Pride Week to declaring the week of the Long Beach Pride Festival and Parade as LGBTQ Pride Week whenever it is held. We know that that has changed. We all know that Long Beach has a longstanding history of activism for LGBTQ. of activism for LGBTQ+ rights, and our LGBTQ+ community is growing strong and vibrant. According to the Long Beach Historical Society, the first Long Beach Gay Pride Festival and Parade was organized by Marilyn Barlow, Bob Crowe, and Judith Doyle on June 23rd and 24th, 1984, where nearly 5,000 attended the two-day event. By formally recognizing Harvey Milk Day and Pride Month in perpetuity, it sends a powerful message to our residents, employees, visitors, and to the world that we here in Long Beach support and stand in solidarity with the LGBTQ+ community. Long Beach has such a rich history with the community. And our language is important, especially at a time when members of the community are feeling under threat and are under threat in other parts of this country and seeing their rights and liberties taken away every single day. Our city has longstanding traditions celebrating LGBTQ pride history with events and celebrations across the city. I have already attended pride events in District 5 and District 2 and here at the Civic Center in District 1. And I look forward to the many events across our city and the region over the next few weeks and months ahead. I want to express my gratitude to the City Manager's Office, the Mayor's Office, Secretary Becerra, Vice Mayor Allen, and Councilwomen Zindeh Haas, board members from the Center and Equality Plaza for their passionate words at the raising of the Progress Pride Flag this past week. It was an important moment, and I was grateful to be there to participate surrounded by our city staff. These are extremely important and personally significant traditions. The intention of this item is an administrative fix and affirmation that pride have a month and Harvey Milk have a day in perpetuity on our city's calendar. I, like many allies, have witnessed firsthand the struggles of our LGBTQ+ community that they faced, that they continue to face, the strength that they have demonstrated and continue to demonstrate, and the resilience they embody. For it is with them and countless others that I pledge my unwavering support of the LGBTQ+ community. This item ensures that it isn't dependent on who's in any office, who is city staff at the time, that we are committing to supporting and uplifting our community in a way to affirm that Long Beach is a place where all are welcome to be themselves and that the LGBTQ community is part of the very fabric of who we are as Long Beach. We've come a long way in Long Beach from not allowing a permit for a gay pride parade in the 80s to electing LGBTQ members to this body and other levels of government. And I'm proud of where we are today and look forward to my colleagues' support of this item. Our traditions and history around pride are rich. And along with those traditions and history, we know that our LGBTQ+ community is living, working, owning businesses, and thriving in every corner of our great city. They are our children, our siblings, our coworkers, our friends, the community that we interact with day in and day out. They are our staff. And being publicly supportive right now matters more than ever. I ask my colleagues for your support on this item and hope we can stand on the right side of history. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Next is Councilwoman Zindeh Haas.
Thank you, Councilmember Kerr, for inviting me onto this item. I am so happy to support this item that you're bringing forward. Our city has been a longtime proud and vocal supporter of the LGBTQ+ community and gay rights. And at this time, more than ever before, is when we, as a council, can show our support. And by you bringing this item forward, it shows exactly that. And for that, I thank you. I'm very proud to be a representative of the home of the Harvey Milk Promenade Park in Equity Plaza here in the 1st District. But because it is the first openly gay person, I'm sorry, the first park named after an openly gay person and the first in the nation to be named after Mr. Harvey Milk. And I share this with great honor with the whole city. And I'm so happy to be able to be here today as we stand with our LGBTQ+ community. Like I said before, especially in times like this. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Sorrow.
Yes, I want to thank Councilwoman Kerr for bringing this on with Vice Mayor Allen and Councilwoman Zindeh Haas. You know, I think that it's so important. It's a great item to declaring June as Pride Month to reaffirm our city's commitment to inclusion and to be a welcoming city for all in a time right now where there are many outrightly attacking LGBTQ rights and access to important and vital resources. And so I want to make sure that I'm demonstrating my support, that we all stand with our LGBTQ community in this time of attacks and that we stand in solidarity with you all. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Austin.
I just want to thank Councilmember Kerr for bringing this forward. I think this is obviously timely and certainly is consistent with our city's values. And I'm surprised we hadn't done this before. So thank you, and certainly, we stand with our LGBTQ community and for dignity for all people.
Thank you. Okay, so no further comment. I'll add my comments here before we go to public comment. But this is a great item and a very welcome item. And I'll say, similar to what Councilman Austin said, I've been a part of this body, either staff or on the council, for 12 years. We always celebrate pride and raise the pride flag. But I did not know that it was not an official, recognized city holiday. And I don't know why that hadn't occurred to us. But I think what's important about this is the point that you mentioned, that, you know, staff changes, elected officials change. But, and unless you codify things in policy, it's just a program. And programs change from time to time. Policy is progress. Policy is really progress. So by making sure it's reflected in our municipal code, we ensure that it guides the decisions and the actions and the investments that we make. And so we will certainly recognize this. And although, you know, this year's been different. We moved the month of the pride parade. We're also going to raise it and highlight, even though the pride parade's in August, we're going to, we're going to make sure that while the pride parade is taking place, we also, no matter what month, whether it's some pride month or not, that we raise the flag and we highlight our city facilities as well. So this was a very thoughtful item. I'm happy to support it. We'll now go to public comment. We have two members of the public signed up to speak, Elsa Martinez and John Newell. Please come forward.
Good evening. So good to see all of you. This makes, I've just been smiling since you guys have been talking about this proposed resolution. I, Long Beach Pride has a long history, and we are proud to be here. I am Elsa Martinez, co-president of Long Beach Pride. And I would like to express my support of the City Council's decision to consider proclaiming May 22 as Harvey Milk Day and the month of June as LGBTQ+ Month. I support that. It is a pride month all over the country. So we support that. Our festival will be in August, August 5th and 6th, and our parade on the 6th. So we get to look forward to, you know, pride summer. So all summer, you guys get to celebrate with us. And at this time, when civil rights and the rights of LGBTQ+ individuals are under fire around the country and homophobia and hate crimes are running rampant, I am so happy and pleased to see that these proposals are before the City Council, this legislative body that has shown steadfast support for us, for Long Beach Pride, for our LGBTQ+ community time and time again over the years, and we appreciate that. This proclamation will show the folks that want to turn back the clock and victimize and further marginalize our queer communities, our queer children, our trans children, that Long Beach stands behind its residents, whether they're straight or gay or lesbian or bi or trans or queer or whoever we are, regardless of our ethnic origin or our religious beliefs. Like much of Southern California, Long Beach has been a haven of opportunity for families and individuals, including this growing LGBTQ+ community that has deep roots in the city, which we are honored to celebrate. Our founder came to, our founder Bob Crowe came to Long Beach because it was comfortable, because we could be, he could be who he wanted to be here. And me too. I came here in 1989 to be queer, to be able to go walk down the street and not be scared. And that's what I want for my children. And that's what I want for all of our children. This bond between the city and Long Beach Pride is echoed in the life of Harvey Milk, the late San Francisco supervisor and gay community activist who represented the gay and lesbian community in that city in the '70s. His ability to move his activism into the political arena and bring much-needed representation to his community and bring about change is still celebrated four decades later.
Thank you. Your time is up.
I would like to thank all of you for the resolution.
Thank you so much. Next is John Newell.
Good evening, councilmembers. Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, staff. Thank you for being here. First of all, thank you so much for all of your support for the LGBTQ+ community. Your words just mean so much to me as a member of that community, and I'm sure it means the same thing to those people at home. But I am here today to speak in favor of item 37 in recognition of declaring May 22 as Harvey Milk Day and the month of June as Pride Month. By taking this action, you uplift and inspire the hopes, values, and love of Harvey Milk, who fought so hard for equality. Harvey once said that all people, regardless of their sexual orientation, identity, deserve a safe and supportive environment in which to achieve their full potential. And we continue to strive to that environment that we're working with today. Harvey was the first openly gay person elected to public office in the state. And he was assassinated June, excuse me, in November of 1978 at the age of 48. I am the co-chair of the Harvey Milk Equality Plaza Committee with my co-chair Deb Kohuli, which, and that is in Councilmember Zindeh Haas's district. And the park is located right on Third and the Promenade. One of the cornerstones of that park is the Equality Plaza Wall, which has inducted nearly 50 of local, our local LGBTQ leaders that have shown a great deal of commitment to our community. And each year, the selection committee reaches out to the entire city of Long Beach and the surrounding communities to induct LGBTQ leaders into this wall, who inspire and create change in their community. Engagement in the community is a key to fulfilling the Equality Plaza, which was created in 2012 and opened in 2013. And the walls, again, are filled with names of many, many of those leaders to recognize all of their efforts. The plaza includes a concrete replica of the soapbox, which Milk used to inspire crowds, which he spoke to, and a beautiful 20-foot flagpole, which flies our pride flag all year round. Thank you so much. Annually, as I said, the committee looks to our city for nominations. And we will be opening up those nominations the 1st of July. Our 10-year anniversary celebration will be on October 18. And I hope all of you are able to attend. And thank you so much for all you do for our city and especially our LGBTQ+ community. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. And with that, members, please cast your votes.
The motion is carried.
Thank you. 31, please.
Item 31 is a report from Parks, Recreation, and Marines. Recommendation to adopt resolution in support of the formation of the Lower San Gabriel River Recreation and Park District. Direct City Clerk to file the resolutions with the local area Formation Commission and authorize City Manager to approve the final district boundary map citywide.
Thank you. I want to acknowledge Councilmember Sorrow for recusal.
Yes, out of an abundance of caution, I'm recusing myself since I work for RMC, who's bringing, who's working to form the park district. Thank you.
All right. Let's have a presentation.
We have a very short oral report from Brent Dennis.
Thank you, Tom. So, Honorable Mayor and members of City Council, very similar to the request for City Council's support by resolution last year for the formation of the Lower Los Angeles River Recreation and Park District. The item agenda before you this evening is an opportunity for the city of Long Beach to also support the formation of the Lower San Gabriel River Recreation and Park District. As both a local and regional challenge, lack of park space and access to the Lower San Gabriel River requires a regional solution. In 19, or in 2021, Senate Bill 268 was formed, authorizing Los Angeles County cities along the Lower San Gabriel River to form the Lower San Gabriel River Recreation and Park District. The purpose of the district would be to advance park development and activities along the San Gabriel River that exceed the boundaries of the individual cities. This includes the 11 cities along this river, which includes, in alphabetical order, Artesia, Bellflower, Cerritos, Downey, Hawaiian Gardens, Lakewood, Long Beach, Norwalk, Pico Rivera, Santa Fe Springs, and Whittier. District boundaries are anticipated to extend one mile from the river following major roadways. The final boundary map for the district will be presented to each member city for approval. The city of Pico Rivera has stepped forward as the lead city applicant for the formation of the district. The district is intended to help promote the development of open space and parks for the benefit of communities along the Lower San Gabriel River by increasing inter-jurisdictional coordination and resources. The district could bring more flexible resources to use for ongoing costs that could include maintenance and operations. Staff recommends that the City Council approve by resolution to support the formation of the district through the local Agency Formation Commission, known as LAFCO, process so that Long Beach would be one of the first cities to support following the city of Pico Rivera's lead on the formation of the district. In terms of timing considerations, the Rivers and Mountains Conservancy is currently in the process of forming the district through LAFCO. Staff would further recommend that, once the board is formed, the city would advocate for board representation to be weighted according to population and geographic territory represented along the river. The initial board would be comprised of 15 members, each with one vote, as described within the outline attached. Since the city, since Long Beach represents roughly one-fifth of the Lower San Gabriel River and a significant portion of the population in the district, the city should request to have a more equitable vote structure whereby votes on key issues, like those that have a direct fiscal impact on the member jurisdictions, would require both a majority vote for the board members and a weighted vote based on geographic territory and population order to be adopted. In terms of the fiscal impact, the long-term fiscal impact of the district board participation at this time is unknown. However, the district would have the authority to apply jointly for funds, solicit private donations, and potential public-private partnerships for funds to operate and maintain parks. This concludes an overview of the opportunity before City Council this evening. I do want to acknowledge and thank the Rivers and Mountains Conservancy's Executive Director, Mark Stanley, who's with us this evening, and his great team for their guidance in the LAFCO process as well as Dr. Tyler Curley, who's assisted through the City Manager's Office in advancing the agenda item this evening. All of us are available to answer any questions that you may have at this time.
All right. Thank you. I think all of this is very good. If it's an opportunity to raise revenue to support parks and open space, it's something that we support. Comments from the council, starting with Councilmember Yarunga.
Very happy to support this item. Point of call of order. I am a member of the Rivers and Mountains Conservancy. Can I vote on this?
I would recommend that you not.
Thank you. Can I withdraw?
Does he need to step out right now?
That would be an excellent.
All right. Let's go ahead and step on out. We're going to hold on. You know, we should probably withdraw his main motion. I think we can handle that, Roberto.
I acknowledge that I'm doing this as a precautionary measure. I wasn't thinking about it before when I made the motion. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, let's get a motion and a second going. It's a motion, is there a second? Great, and we'll just give it a moment.
Thank you to staff for bringing this item forward. I love to hear about that, Mr. Dennis, because this really lays the groundwork for something positive for communities around the San Gabriel River. This item will promote partnerships between cities along the river and work to make more accessible by exploring different ways to fund projects at the discretion of the board. I know there were some concerns that this would allow for a fee assessment, but you talked about, I understand that the partner cities aren't really interested in this, and if they were, then it would be up to the voters. It will allow us to offer, to go for grants and funding, which is incredibly important at this time for our parks, and I've heard you talk about it. I'm really excited for this item. I think this is great for the communities along the San Gabriel River, and I'm proud to support it.
Thank you. Councilmember Supernaw.
Thank you. I just had one question that came up in our briefing, because it was mentioned here again tonight that the jurisdiction runs either side of this San Gabriel River for one mile, I think was the quote. And my question, having been involved with the Wetlands Authority in the past, is that that group has representation from Orange County, at least one Orange County city. So, we don't need to answer it tonight unless Mark Stanley has the answer, but just moving forward, I'd like to get that sorted out. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Kerr.
Yes, thank you. Thank you to staff for your work on this. I'm happy to support. The 5th District has about a quarter of Long Beach's portion of this, and we know it's really important to have good communication with different jurisdictions along the river, and it makes for a safer, smoother way for folks to access and recreate along the river. So, being in a consortium on a board to be able to make sure that plans are contiguous and that there's a similar experience across the region is really critical. So, I'm happy to support this and look forward to the work moving forward.
Great, thank you. We'll now go to public comment. Francesca Shaboya.
Good evening, thank you. I'm here in support of this motion, and I think this is a great opportunity for Long Beach to be involved in equitable policy that can really address the issue of environmental justice, and I know it's something that Long Beach has been advocating for for a really long time, and thinking about equitable policies that can especially address different neighborhoods that are of Black and Brown communities and AAPI communities as well. And so, when we think about this plan, I'm just asking that we also take into consideration that these are the neighborhoods that suffer from the highest pollution rates and food deserts, so this is a really good opportunity to improve quality of life and health within these neighborhoods. I also am asking that the council or whoever is serving on this district board would also focus on equitable policies and a mission, because I know that there's something in there about the district has the ability to have insight into the mission statement for this district. So, I'm asking that it is of importance and emphasize that this project doesn't lead to gentrification efforts along these green spaces, because I know that oftentimes when projects like this occur, this oftentimes leads to gentrification efforts. So, because this is a neighborhood that suffers from, again, food deserts, high pollution, lack of green space, that this is something that is emphasized in the mission as the district moves forward. I'm also asking that this is possibly used as a springboard for health initiatives within these areas, because this is definitely one of those preventative efforts that can contribute to overall health improvement within these neighborhoods, which I'm hoping is a priority for the city. I'm also asking that this doesn't replace already this urgent need to improve green space within these regions or within the parks within these regions, like, for example, Silverado Park specifically. So, although we're pushing for this great initiative, I'm asking that it doesn't replace an already urgent need and that we can still address those inequitable green spaces, again, access to overall quality of health. And last thing, I noticed in the presentation, it was mentioned about equitable voting structure so that we can have an impact on the fiscal voting, but I'm just asking in general, we think about equitable voting structure when we also talk about how it impacts communities, and if possible, to consider the community have a voice in how this will impact them as well, the direct communities impacted. Thank you.
Thank you. Great comments, well said. Councilman Austin.
Thank you. If I could just ask staff to, can you help us outline the difference between this park district, the San Gabriel River, and the LA River, and what the geographic differences are?
Sure. So, essentially, the number of communities that have been identified by legislation in both park districts, you know, represent the adjacent municipalities along each river corridor. The joining of the Lower LA River Recreation and Park District last year does have their progress much further down the road, so they're currently finalizing geographical mapping of exactly what the footprint of the district will be. And then, each of the municipalities that have, by resolution, signed on will begin identifying their board member that'd be represented, and there's where all the building blocks of the district will start to occur with the formation of bylaws, the mission statement, et cetera. And then, this will probably be about a year behind that process, but it's very, very similar in nature.
So, the Lower LA River consists of the west side of the city?
Yeah, so that actually puts Long Beach in a very unique situation, where we would be kind of bookend on both east and west side by park districts. And, you know, I know the jurisdictional benefits are immense, but I know, just overseeing the Marine Bureau's duties in cleaning up storm debris, which is usually bringing all those upstream or upriver municipalities' storm debris down for us to deal with, that's a great opportunity for us to deal with that collaboratively in the future.
Yes, indeed. So, the item before us is the San Gabriel River?
Yes.
Right, that's located on the east side of the city?
That's correct, sir.
Can you, so that is, that's Long Beach, that would be, what, Hawaiian Gardens?
Yeah, Artesia, Bellflower.
Sarito's.
Right.
Whittier, Santa Fe Springs.
Yeah, so, just for clarity, the legislation that established both the park districts, specifically named the, I guess, the municipalities that would be initially included, and there is a process that a municipality could leave the district once it's formed, and also a process, so, as was asked about, I think Councilman Supernaw asked about, Orange County municipalities, it's possible, like Seal Beach, even though they're not in the initial legislation, could opt in, you know, through a process that would be identified.
Okay, thank you so much for clarifying that.
Thank you, good questions, thank you.
Thank you. Members, please cast your vote.
The motion is carried.
Thank you. Next up is public comment. We have seven members of the public signed up to speak. I'll read their names, and please come forward. First is Anthony, second is Tamika, third is Jillian, fourth is Sebastian, fifth is Michael Fletcher, sixth is Toriann, and seventh is Anna Christiansen. Please come forward. First up is Anthony. Is Anthony here? Raise your hand. Okay, please come forward.
My issue is not with you, Richardson, or none of the council members. Tom and Deco, you've been here for a long time, right? I'm assuming I did a background check, 21 years. So, you do know that Rudy Humana did sex or harassment to a white woman in our department, right? Because from my understanding, things come to you before it hit cancel. The same lady that I see, the person that he done it to, I see her every week on my route. She used to wave at us, say hi, now she don't even look at us. I won't say her name, I'll keep it anonymous, because I probably know she's still traumatized or suffering for what he said or done to her. And every councilwoman that's up there, you guys should be pissed off, mad, because they have signs going around in our department about harassment, so it just don't apply to him. You also know, December 8, 2009, City Council fired him. They voted him out in San Bernardino. So, he brought the same behavior that he was doing out there to our department, and it was a cover-up. So, I'm trying to see how you guys keep missing this. I'm coming up here every month, and they keep, they continue to do, they keep, continue doing the same thing, messing over us, passing us up, not promoting Black people. When they do promote Black people, it's three blacks. So, y'all promote three Black people in promotions when it's time for promotions, and hoping that go over our head, just to say, oh, we're not discriminating. I just don't understand. Richardson, we can come here in a three-piece suit every day, Al Austin, you can come here in a three-piece suit every day. At the end of the day, we have to take them suits off. At the end of the day, we still, you know what in their eyes. I'm a reputation of you, Richardson, Al Austin, Joanie, Rex, Pamela, every Black person up in here. I stand up here by myself, because I'm getting tired of them continuing to pass me up with these promotions and treat our Black people in our department how they've been treating us. And it's sad. I'm just trying to figure out, like, why Rudy Humana and Deco, I forget his last name right now, but Deco is still working in our department? I just don't get it. Like, treat them like how they did Tyrese, the officers that killed Tyrese Nichols. But you know race played a part in that, because they was Black, right? Okay, treat them like they Black and fire them already. So, I'm just trying to figure it out, like, come on now, man, I'm coming up here every day. Everything that I say is facts. I have, it's public record with Rudy Humana. I'm just trying to see how you guys let this get passed off. It's something big that's about to happen. I mean, I'm trying to talk to you guys, because obviously, the people in EO is not doing their job, and I have three minutes next time when I come and talk about Ramon Garcia, it's all about him. You guys have a nice day.
Thank you. Next speaker is Tamika.
Today, I stand before you to shed light on a deeply troubling matter that has recently come to the forefront of public consciousness, the failure of the Long Beach Cannabis Social Equity Dispensary RFP process. It is a matter of utmost concern and urgency that we address the numerous flaws and injustices that have marred this process. The Long Beach Cannabis Social Equity Dispensary RFP was intended to provide an opportunity to marginalize communities and individuals to enter the cannabis industry, a sector that has historically excluded us. It was meant to empower those who have been disproportionately affected by the war on drugs, fostering economic growth and social progress in the process. Regrettably, what transpired is blatant disregard for fairness, transparency, and the principles of social equity. One of the most egregious problems with this RFP process was the inclusion of applicants who used fake addresses and failed to meet the address criteria. This not only undermines the integrity of the entire selection process, but it also deprives deserving individuals and communities the opportunities we were promised. How can we claim to uphold social equity when those with false information and non-qualifying addresses are given a chance while those who genuinely meet the criteria are left behind? Moreover, it came to light that certain applicants reside in census tracts that did not qualify for social equity status. This raises serious concerns about the impartiality and competence of the individuals responsible for reviewing and scoring the applications. We have also learned that some applicants were allowed to have consultants and other third-party participants during the panel interviews. This is not only raises concerns about potential manipulation of the process, but also undermines the principle of equal opportunity. Additionally, some applicants have a net worth well above the $250,000 limit. This restriction was put in place precisely to prevent the concentration of wealth and ensure that opportunities are distributed equally. By allowing applicants with excessive net worth to participate, you are perpetuating the same inequalities that social equity programs were designed to rectify. It gets worse. A deeply troubling conflict of interest has emerged involving a review panelist who had prior business transactions with at least two applicants whom she scored. This raises questions about the integrity of the selection process and casts a dark shadow over the entire endeavor. We cannot allow personal connections and vested interests to compromise the fairness and objectivity that should be the bedrock of any public undertaking. Finally, adding insult to injury is the gender discrimination that has resulted in the absence of a single woman-owned dispensary among the selected applicants. Long Beach will now have 40 dispensaries and not one woman-owned. This is a glaring example of how systemic biases persist, even in supposed progressive initiatives. We must ensure that our social equity programs empower women who have historically faced significant barriers to entering industries dominated by men. There is no true equity and inclusiveness if we allow such discrimination to persist unchecked. This program is supposed to be social equity, not social equality.
Thank you. Next is Sebastian. Is Sebastian here? Okay, come forward, please.
Before I introduce myself, there's this number, insignificant number, 38. Just want that to ring in your head a little bit, and I'll get back to why it's important. I'm Sebastian Belmont, one of the RFP candidates, and when I saw the results, I'm nine on the list. I really wasn't that, when I saw it, I was like, okay, maybe the best man won. Let me take it on a chin. I was very proud of one of the applicants, Carlos Sabeda, because I know how hard he worked and his contribution to the community, so, saw that. But then, as I start to look at the results, there was this number, 38, which didn't make sense to me, because 38, it's not really easy to calculate. Not too many things you can put together, always get 38. But out of 20 applicants on their business plan, all of them got 38%. 11 out of 20, 38%. How does the math of that add up? So, then that makes me question, what's the due process? And was it a fair one? Because I know I wrote, I spent two months writing a 92-page business plan, very thorough, well outlined. So, am I to believe that everybody had something equal or better than mine? 38%. So, what I'm requesting is for this RFP process to be put on hold until it can be verified that everything was verified in a due process and proper due diligence, because the numbers don't add up. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Jillian?
I'll put this back up here, because apparently, y'all not paying attention. So, you know, I'm doing a testing lab, but I'm here today to talk about the dispensary RFP. First of all, there's not one woman, one woman that made it. One woman out of all of the women that are on there, not one woman made it. You can't even look at me, Rex, because you know that you ratchet. Let me tell you guys something. We've been, some of these people have been here since the inception of the program. We come down here, we talk to you, but you're doing other things that's going to be public soon. I want to tell you something. I've asked God, you know, to pray for these, I pray for you Pharaohs, and I've asked God to soften your hearts. I know you know the story of Pharaoh. We're standing here in need of help to move through the license process. Valencia say, no, we won't help you. You sit back. You sit back there, just relax, like, we just not going to help you. It doesn't make sense in my head. These people have been here since the inception of the program. You choose an Indian man, and bear in mind, my grandmother is Indian, but that don't mean nothing, okay? You choose a white man in there, I don't know how he's social equity. Everybody you choose were male, so what's going on? You have issue with women? Are you just like Garcia? Like, I don't get it. You need to fix this. That list is null and void. Do better, every last one of you. And remember, whatever the detriment really lies that you're inflicting on all of us, life is a mirror. It has to come back to you, and it will in this lifetime. And my words will never return void. Do better.
Next is Michael Fletcher.
Take a picture of it.
Did you already call me?
We still have, I mean, Michael's up next. You're going to go last, Anna. So it's Michael, then it's Toriann, then it's Anna. Please come forward, sir.
Good evening. We have tried to meet with Councilman Austin, with Mayor Rex Richardson. I've sent you an email, Long Beach Social Equity Entrepreneurs. We formed to make sure social equity would happen. Sent you an email documenting six of the eight applicants not meeting minimum requirements. Mr. Supernova, I'm going to leave you out because we didn't write you. My point is this, there are six women on this council. It's up to you guys. These African-American men don't care about black people. They don't. This man has sitting before him, literally, I have this note, Elliot Lewis sent this to me, it's the most shocking thing I've ever read. This is the mayor. The problem, this is referencing social equity. The problem, I see you raising your eyebrows, it's neat. The problem is that black and brown communities aren't ready. I don't want to open the floodgates until we are there, until there's a clear pathway for people to get in. We followed that pathway, and your social equity procedure produced eight social equity licenses and excluded every single woman. Every applicant who received it, zero cannabis experience. You're telling me there's not a single woman in Long Beach with zero cannabis experience who could operate a dispensary? Zero? 40 dispensary license, zero women. I have two daughters. I've applied for licenses. I'm one of the only persons who owned a dispensary. Two of them. I have a law degree. I was one of the lowest-ranked persons. My, literally, the white guy with associate's degree and no cannabis experience, he was scored higher in education. I have a law degree, an undergrad degree, and managed and owned two dispensaries. It is blatant discrimination. You guys can write now, you can write now. I ran campaigns for 20 years. I have this crazy idea that politicians actually care, and young ones do. You guys are just here, ladies. You can change this. 40? These are $1.1 million a month. Not one female business owner is entitled to basic stuff. All they have to do is come and improve it. I've spent $2,000 in background checks. It took us two days. You guys can stop it. You can stop it, but if you don't stop it now, it becomes a property interest. Just have them come here. Just have them produce it. It's not fair. It's not fair. Thank you so much for your time, we appreciate it. You two gentlemen, you should care about your communities.
Next speaker is Toriann. Just a moment, just, go ahead, Anna, go ahead.
Okay, Roberto, you told me you had to come to city council, here I am. We had a conference with him as a member of the Coastal Commission earlier about the fireworks shows. Well, I'd like to update a report. I talked with Tasha Day, our special events coordinator, out in the hall, and there will not be fireworks shot off from Harry Bridges Memorial Park. That's really good news. And her openness and her interest in this issue was completely stunning. And we really appreciate that the awareness is growing about the harm that fireworks do. Unfortunately, some people regard them as patriotic, and even our environmental protection agency at the federal level considers them part of our culture. So it's kind of difficult to move that bar. As I told people, when I was three, I was drawing a lot of pictures of faces with chimneys. I don't think my parents were trying to harm me when they smoked inside the house, but they didn't know. And so when we learn about the harm of fireworks to the air, the water quality, to our veterans, our pets, and our wildlife, we can easily make different choices. If a drone show was good enough for the former, now deceased Queen of England, if it was good enough for the Super Bowl, why can't we just limit fireworks in Long Beach? Get rid of them altogether and celebrate our patriotism in a different way? And that's what we're going to try to plan with the help of special events, and hopefully the council is trying to prohibit fireworks in our city. And as that special events comments were made about, it's not just on the coast, it's not just in one neighborhood. We don't let individuals shoot off fireworks, you know? But other cities do, and people buy those fireworks. We can't control what other cities do. And originally, perhaps fireworks shows were created, big ones, in hopes that people would stop blowing themselves up in their own backyards. That more or less has worked, perhaps, but we're not really setting a good example either to have more pollution in a highly polluted city, right? In a city, in a bay where we're already very worried about how that water's going to get pumped out of the bay, right? We have a serious issue now facing our little tiny, really precious Alameda Bay and our community. So we hope, moving forward, maybe by this year, we can look at doing something like that altogether. And for the time being, we're looking to the Coastal Commission. We hope some of you will be at that meeting online. It's an online meeting on Thursday when the CDP for the Big Bang is reviewed. We will say it does nothing for the birds, unfortunately. One nest is going to be surveyed, not quite cutting it. But anyway, so, good news. Thank you very much.
Thank you. There's one last speaker, Toriann, is she here? Please come forward, thank you.
My name is Toniann. I live in the 3rd district, to be exact. I live four houses from where the homeless man that stabbed people in Belmont Shore was shot. I attended the city meeting last week that followed that incident. Like most people in that meeting, I walked away more frustrated than when I arrived. I heard the word compassion used a lot. I had to look up the definition because what I was hearing was not my understanding of compassion. The definition is sympathetic consciousness of others in distress together with a desire to alleviate it. While I think the first part is correct, the second clearly isn't, because if it was, you would have discussed the shelter and ship program today, which would offer up to 5,000 beds with wraparound services at a fraction of the price discussed today. Let me share a story with you. When my stepson came to live with me, he was, because he was abused by family members, he was getting high every day and suicidal. I gave him boundaries and required him to go to therapy. We set small goals together and I helped him achieve them. I didn't tell him he couldn't get high, but I put him in school. I got him in the gym and required him to work. As he got stronger, I gave him more responsibilities. I told him, no. I said it often. I explained to him, every time someone tells you yes, they're making you weaker. Every time someone tells you no, it's an opportunity to get stronger. He is 21 today. He is a welder. He no longer gets high. He is no longer suicidal. He pays for his own therapy, he pays rent, and he knows he must be ready to be on his own by his 22nd birthday, and that is the goal we are working towards now. I kept him off the streets and alive. That is what compassion looks like and is. It is time to enforce the laws. No camping, no littering, no indecent exposure, no defecating in public, no public intoxication, no doing drugs in public, and no stealing. It's time to tell them no. They still have choices. They are, accept help or move on. You must raise the bar so they can rise with it. Back to compassion. Where is your compassion for the citizens that elected you? I used to feel safe walking in my neighborhood, but no longer. My friends and neighbors all talk about how bad things are. Your solution's not working. It's time to try new things. I urge you to move quickly on the SOS Shelter and Ship Program. I am raising the bar, and I'm hoping you accept this call to action. This is a solution that will not only benefit the homeless population, but it will improve all of our lives. What a legacy this would be for the mayor and this council to do this. I have brought my father, Joe Gatlin, the representative of this project and founder of the NAACP Branch 1069, so that you can get to work immediately and schedule an appointment to have whatever your objections are resolved, so this project can move forward for a better, stronger Long Beach for all of its citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that satisfies public comment. I'm going to ask our city managers to provide some context. We know that there's a lot of filtration out of the city council about the cannabis RFP, and the city council won't be responding as we're in the middle of the process, but I'm going to ask our city manager to clarify.
Yes. While this is under public comment and not agendized, our comments need to be brief. You are correct, there is a protest process that's going on right now as part of the RFP. I'm going to ask Deputy City Attorney Art Sanchez to explain how that works and why this body's not engaging in that on those comments at this time.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Because the RFP process is still ongoing, because the protest period is underway, until that process is completed, it would be improper for anyone to comment on any of the things that the council heard tonight regarding, in relation to public comment. Once the RFP process is complete, that will complete the administrative process. And the process is complete once the purgency manager reviews all of the notice of objections and rules on them. At that point, the process is complete. So I'm open to hear any, if anyone has any questions.
Well, we won't get into discussions since it's not on the agenda, but where can people direct their questions?
Oh, I think to purging is the appropriate place to direct all their questions, and the purgency agent, which I think is Michelle, Michelle Wilson.
Thank you. All right, that satisfies public comment. We'll now go back to the agenda. Item number 24, please.
Item 24 is a report from Economic Development and Health and Human Services. Recommendation to receive and file contract with Long Beach Rescue Mission Foundation, Inc., and First to Serve Ministry, Inc., for space at 702 West Anaheim Street in response to the emergency proclaimed regarding homelessness, District 1.
Thank you. You already heard an update on this, so we'll just go, Councilwoman Zendejas, anything?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I'm really excited about this item. I had the pleasure of touring the building with some of my community leaders and housing advocates on this past Thursday, and I was very, 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 very impressed by all of what's going on there. How well, how efficient it is working, how well-run it is, how well-fed they are. And I think that it was just wonderful to see in person, see live, all of the individuals that were there, that were receiving services at that time from being at the shelter. I think that that just shows such a great, great progress for us. I, you know, I was able to interact with some of the people that were there obtaining those services and learn how they felt safe, and they were very thankful to have somewhere to lay their head at night. And with that, I just want to say thank you so much to our team for all the work that they put in in a very timely manner to get that shelter up and running, and just seeing how much we're able to do for these individuals. I'm just very happy and very glad that we have this. So very, very supportive of this. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Carr.
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to note that this is the paperwork following up the actions that were already taken, and one of the benefits of declaring the emergency was to allow city staff to move quickly on this so that folks weren't, there wasn't a gap in services. So I just wanted to clarify that that is correct and that the paperwork is just catching up with the good work that you've already been doing.
Fantastic, thank you. Two members of the public signed up for public comment, Francesca Shaboya and TK. Francesca, you're up.
Thank you. I want to take this opportunity to center unhoused folks' voices as we discuss policy that directly impacts these individuals. I do appreciate the presentation earlier, but I also personally frequently support unhoused folks near the riverbed and near where this is going to be, or where this temporary shelter currently is. As I've served unhoused folks in Long Beach, I want to share some things that people have personally shared to me as I serve them. They have said things to me like, this is the first time I've felt like a human. They've said things like, this is the first time I've eaten in two days. They've said things like, I lost my job because I looked unhoused. Many individuals suffer from a variety of issues, including but not limited to health illnesses, trauma, addiction, mental illness issues, and disabilities. I remember one of the first times I went out to serve the unhoused in Long Beach, I spoke to someone who mentioned he had to wear headphones to prevent voices from speaking to him in his head. Another woman was deaf on the riverbed, and weeks later, I personally witnessed her have a mental breakdown due to her unhoused situation. In another instance in Long Beach, there was a young girl, she was probably a college student, she had a black eye, and we had to serve her, and weeks later, we found her in a tent on the street crying. These are the situations that our unhoused folks experience day-to-day. They share that they feel that the process is dehumanizing as they are treated as criminals, automatically categorized as addicts, are policed, are restricted, or are treated as adolescents. They share they feel misunderstood as they struggle for survival. They share that they struggle to find housing, even if they have housing vouchers due to the stigma this community faces. They share their obstacles when having to provide documentation that is oftentimes stolen or thrown away during city sweeps. I just wanted to highlight the sentiment that many unhoused folks have personally shared with me in hopes that we, as an entire city, keep this in mind as we move forward with our efforts of supporting this community. As I listened to the presentation, there was a couple questions that came to mind that I'm hoping at some point the city can address. A couple things was, I know that there is an effort to achieve 100% voucher acceptance, so I'm just wondering what the city is doing to do that, because I know that people have had vouchers personally have said for about five months, or probably more, and can't find housing. Also, I know that there was an initiative about working with educational partners, and I wanted to know exactly what that meant. I also know that there are limitations on workers, so like, low numbers of social workers, healthcare workers, and educators to support these efforts. And I would ask maybe the city consider developing cohorts or recruitments in a similar way that police departments do that? Instead, invest in social services and develop similar cohorts like the police department does, and instead invest in our communities. Thank you.
Thank you. Is TK here?
Good evening. Everything Francesca said, I echo. I do want to add on to that, serving people on the riverbed, and we have people that are actually having vouchers in hand right at this moment, and their vouchers have expired. There are expiration dates on those things, they find themselves on the street. We have people that have gone into the hotels specifically. We know that they were in the hotels for a little while, they were moved back out onto the streets, but they were given tents. How nice of y'all. I understand the fact that you have 90 beds, 15 beds available, so on and so forth. That is not enough. More people are living on the street. I understand, I see that you guys have made a really good effort of making some turnarounds. Because last year, when we spoke about this, you weren't talking about unhoused, you were calling them homeless. You weren't talking about wraparound services. You weren't talking about the hotels. I'm so glad that that is an option right now, but it needs to be a date, a definitive date of when these things can happen so that people can move in immediately. Shelters are not really an option for a lot of people, because as we were speaking to folks that are on the riverbed to have vouchers in hands right now, they're asking, why can't I get those services? Why do I have to go into a shelter? It's safer to be here than it is to some shelters. The reality is this, there are not enough space. There are not enough things that are available right now. And also, with those people that are sitting with vouchers in hands, they have to go and find their places. They get a list of 33 pages, and there's a one-year to two-year waiting list for them to eat. to even have access to those places if they're granted access from the management company, landlord, whatever you want to call them. The reality is this, that if they have those vouchers in hand, it seems like that should already be vetted to make sure that they have that, so it cuts down on that frustration as well, let alone, like I said, the expiring vouchers. And as social workers, healthcare providers, so on and so forth, those services need to be there in place as well. As Francesca said, you have people that are going to work. They lost their jobs because they couldn't maintain their hygiene. It's sad. You have people that are going to work and washing themselves by the riverbed. It's sad. I cannot imagine, how many of us appeared outside? I cannot imagine having to go number two and realizing, "This is my life." Give some dignity back to people and even put restrooms in those spots. How about we start there? We talk about dignity. I see y'all are now starting to humanize people a little bit more when we come to our unhoused neighbors and friends. That's great. Let's do something for right here, right now, to show and extend an olive branch. Open up bathrooms.
Thank you. Thank you for your time. Members, please cast your vote.
Motion is carried.
Item 40, please.
Item 40 is a report from Public Works. Recommendation to receive and file a presentation on the Studebaker Road Major Corridor Improvements Project, District 3, 4, and 5.
Councilmember Superna.
Actually, Mr. Mayor, may I go first?
Oh, yeah, go for it, sorry.
So I need to recuse myself. I live on Studebaker, so at the advice of the attorney, I need to step out of the room, and I'll rejoin you.
Well, look at that.
Assistant City Manager Linda Tatum will be in my place.
All right, hang on. Let's let him recuse himself. All right, and Madam Assistant City Manager, before you start, I know Councilmember Superna asked for this a couple of weeks ago. Any framing comments before we get into the presentation?
No, I'm ready for the report.
All right, let's hear our report.
Great. We are excited to come back. Since December, there have been some new developments, so Public Works Director Eric Lopez is going to give an overview of the project, and he'll talk about some of the timelines and the funding and some of the updates that have occurred since December. Eric?
Thank you, Linda. Mayor members of the City Council, the last time I provided an update on this project was December 6, 2022, so I'm glad we get another opportunity to provide some of the latest updates and developments that we had. I want to start by mentioning that, you know, when I did the last update, we did talk about the four major corridor projects, two of which are now in the middle of construction, Artesia Boulevard and Market Street, and the next two, Studebaker and Anaheim are next. So today, we're gonna focus on Studebaker, but there is another major corridor project that we're also working hard on, and that is Anaheim, and I just wanted to make sure that I acknowledged that. So back in December 6, I did make some statements on the project during the oral report. I wanted to highlight those. When we're reporting on capital projects, I am often careful to make sure that we state what our target budgets are and where our target schedules are, because things evolve in construction, especially as you go through detailed designs, preparing construction documents, getting bids back. It is a very dynamic process from beginning to end. The level of design that we've done from December 6 has unveiled a lot of details, some of which I'm gonna talk about, that has impacted the project's global work, the design, and the project budget and timeline. But I also wanted to acknowledge that the written staff report did include a mistake. We mistakenly wrote in the staff report that the total project budget was $18 million. Studebaker, I will go through the budget, but it is higher than that, and I will share a comparison of Studebaker with two of our other major corridor projects, just so you can see kind of what we deal with on a normal major corridor project. So we'll get into those details, but there was some mistake in the staff report. I want to acknowledge that, and I do want to apologize for that, because that was inconsistent with my oral staff report, where I made it clear that we do anticipate to seek additional funding, and that we were gonna be using the fiscal year budget development process to secure the additional funding that the project needed. Also, I wanted to provide an overview on the project itself, and how one of our key goals is to make Studebaker safer, and it is to implement the vision laid out in the adopted bicycle master plan. It is proven that separated bikeways do reduce risk of most common bicycle collisions, and I did add some examples on the right on what some of those reductions are when you have a complete street with protected bike lanes. Also, just reminder of the goals of the Studebaker project is not just a paving project, it is an intent to calm traffic, especially near schools and parks. We are continuing our bikeway network constructions. We are doing a lot more urban greening than we have in the past for sustainability purposes, and we are looking to expand transit and pedestrian amenities, as well as reduce greenhouses by planting more trees and green scape. We're also, a very unique opportunity with this project to install city fiber optic that will help connect this part of the city to our fiber optic network that is not currently connected. Another important distinction on Studebaker is the length. This is a five-mile corridor that crosses three council districts. When we get into construction, this will be the largest major corridor project that we would have undertaken. So, you know, we know it's a big task, but we have a great team of city staff and consultant engineers that are helping us deliver this very major corridor project. That will include a very different variation of roadway improvements, class-four protected bikeway, bus stop enhancements, curb enhancements, landscaping and irrigation. I talked about the fiber optic. It will also include some of our newer traffic signal technologies with new signals installed, and then there's gonna be a lot of ADA improvements, including new sidewalk that doesn't currently exist, that will make this area more accessible for all. I'm not gonna go through these in detail, but I did wanted to show some typical sections of specific areas, and I'm happy to come back to these if there are any questions. So here's a typical section of the existing condition with the proposed corridor improvement plan, and this is between Second Street to north of Loin's Drive. We have another typical section from Stern Street to Spring Street, and again, it shows the existing condition on the top and the proposed plan on the bottom of what we're planning in that part of the corridor. We're also, here's another one of Spring Street to Wardlow Road on Studebaker, and again, it shows the existing with the proposed plan. And then here's a rendering looking north, from Second Street, looking north on Studebaker, and this is the area between here and Anaheim that we are proposing to have the class-four bikeways on one side of the street, where you also have the sidewalk areas there, too. So we wanted to re-show a rendering. I did show this rendering before as well. And then, we were asked, when the request was made for this presentation, to focus in on the bridge, on the overcrossing over Seventh Street. So here's Studebaker Road looking north, overcrossing the SR 22 Seventh Street. The proposed plan is to have a mixed-use path coming through. We are looking to have two southbound lanes, and then we are looking to do a one northbound lane. If you note, right before this bridge going northbound, you have the entrance to the 22, which connects to the 605, to the 405, and so there's less northbound traffic after that entrance that creates an opportunities for us to look at this design. This is an interim design. This is Caltrans right-of-way. City staff and Caltrans are working on a permanent solution to those on-ramps and off-ramps and over crossings here in this area. There's still no designs that have been finalized, but the idea is this would be an interim step toward a long-term solution once we define the project and figure out funding for the future intersection here between Studebaker and Seventh Street and the 22nd. We've shown this rendering before, showing the median on Studebaker Road. This median is intended to help slow traffic down, and the median is in addition to the bikeway improvements, to a lot of drainage improvements here. This is actually an area where, upon doing further design since December 6, we realized that the requirements for water flow and drainage are a lot more intense than we expected. We are required to capture any stormwater runoff before it enters the wetlands, which is a critical environmentally sensitive areas, and we realize that the soil here is not very good and will require additional treatment. So the roadway improvements in this section is gonna be more expensive than we anticipated, but it will eliminate that situation that you see now where you have these humps and where the soil has settled to a way where it does create an environment that is not as safe as it needs to be. So we're really looking forward to correcting that, and I am thankful for the engineers who have helped us improve the design to make sure that we make our Studebaker corridor as safe as possible. This is another rendering I showed as well. This shows the bus stop on the lane. It shows where people wait. It also shows additional space for anyone with extra needs that may require extra space. What I like from this rendering is that it also shows the bike paths going behind the bus stop and the sidewalks. We are still working on the other bus stops, and we're looking at areas where we have space to better coordinate the different users of the intersection, including those persons with disability. We're doing them, but there are areas where we have smaller space that we're trying to figure out the optimal way of increasing accessibility and safety for all of our users, including persons with disabilities. We've also spent a lot of time on this reconfigured T-intersection concept, Ellos Coyotes Diagonal. We've done the majority of the engineering design. We're actually at 90% design now. This has proven to be very complex and complicated. We'll have new signal upgrades, new crosswalks, new medians, so we've been able to detail this out, but as we figured this out, you know, the cost for these improvements are a little higher than what we previously anticipated. So I'm going to go into the budget. When you look at all of the different estimates from our engineers at the 90% design iteration, we are looking at an overall estimated construction cost of around $38 million, and I broke down into the categories here, and before you get sticker shocked, I want to show what we have experienced in our other major corridor projects, too, because the cost for Studebaker Road on a per-mile basis is consistent with what we expect on major corridor projects. What we expect usually is a range of $6 million to about $13 million for major corridors, depending on the specific conditions of that corridor. Some have four lanes, some have two lanes, some major corridors have class-four bikeways, some have a combination of class-two and four bikeways, some require a lot of drainage enhancements, some do not. There is no corridor that is the same. But the point of this slide is to show how, you know, when we look at our major corridors, it falls within our engineers' estimate and expected cost, and these costs are in line with what we're seeing. So just wanted to highlight that. I also wanted to show some of the existing pictures of the two other major corridors. We've made major progress on Market Street and Artesia. There's massive construction underway now. It just shows the level of improvements that these corridors have. It's not spot improvements. These are more transformative projects that, again, I went through the whole list of improvements that we do, from accessibility to storm drain management, to safety, to signals, to fiber optics. So I wanted to take a moment and show that it's major construction that is highly complex. We are dealing with other utilities in the area, some of which we just found about, because for whatever reason, their records from 80 years ago, you know, weren't incorporated accurately into our system, but we deal with these challenges in the field, and we make sure that our projects are delivered as effectively as possible. Now, I'd like to jump into the project funding snapshot, and some good news here, there is, we've identified more funding that we've been able to put into the budget. We currently have a total of $24.7 million in the project budget. Part of this increase was as a result of Measure A and the action this council took in order to increase the Measure A investments into not just our major corridor program, but other street improvements and citywide infrastructure improvements, which happened a few weeks ago. We've also identified a series of additional sources, including some federal funding. There's two federal funding pots here, the STPL and the earmark recommendation from Congressman Garcia that totals over $10 million. That is federal funding that we didn't have, that weren't within our radar in December. They are now. We actually started the process of federalizing this project a few months back, so we're going through the federal project. So while it's very good news that we have federal funding, which will allow us to do more with our city funding and be able to repair more streets, there are additional requirements that come with federal funding, and there will be impacts to the schedule, but it is my contention that those schedule impacts outweigh the benefit we get from bringing in these federal funds into our street projects. In addition to those two federal funding sources, we've also identified the OCTA Settlement Agreement Funds, up to $6.5 million. We're working with Caltrans to repurpose that to Studebaker, and we expect that to come back to council for action in the coming months. We're really close with finalizing that agreement with Caltrans. We've also identified some grant funding from the Clean California Grant and found a creative way to connect the Clean California Grant Program with stormwater quality treatment improvements. So we're looking to combine the Clean California Grant with Measure W funding, which will serve as the match for that grant program. So in additional sources that we're currently pursuing, we have identified over $22 million. And then we identified some of our other pots of money, including our FY24 CIP corridor funding, and the plan, as I stated back in December, was to use the budget process to fill in any gaps that are remaining on the project and to potentially backstop any funding commitments from the federal government, because we know that it sometimes takes the federal government and the state some time to send us the actual dollars we're going to need in order to be able to move forward with a major project like this. So just wanted to highlight, I talked about some of the design refinements that we've done, the funding. I think we've made some major progress and have identified additional sources, but they do come some schedule impacts associated with this. The new, the target to put the project out to bid, I have previously stated, spring or summer. We're now looking at the fall. That is our target bid, releasing the bid, and then our revised target for awarding a contract would be, you know, by spring of this coming year, just assuming the funding sources that we're anticipating, including the over $1 million in federal funds comes in. So if that works out, I really like where we're at, and we'll be in the position to kick off construction. So projects like these are hard, they're difficult, but I have an amazing team. Musen Habib is our project management officer that leads major corridors. He got Artesia into construction, he got Market into construction, and he's gonna to help me get Studebaker and Anaheim into construction as well. He is truly one of our all-stars. I also have Paul Van Dyke here, our city traffic engineer, who can answer any questions on street design, on complete streets, on Vision Zero, on the Bike Master Plan. He is my knowledge book on all things complete streets. So that concludes the report, and I'm ready to answer any questions you may have.
Well, I'll tell you, that was an impressive report, and I'm just excited about this corridor. And when you highlighted the progress on Market Street, on Artesia Boulevard, and then Anaheim's up next, these are going to be four incredible corridors and touch every part of our city. So, great work. Councilmember Supranaw.
Thank you. And thank you, Mayor, for the offer to frame this issue. And what I'd like to do is kind of clarify my position and rationale for bringing this item forward. There were some public comments that thought I had taken a position on complete streets, and I don't think I did. I think I was just asking for an update on this project, because all we've had for six months are the numbers that we showed you last time, two weeks ago at that meeting. So we need to create a new set of numbers to share with the public now. We did get a letter, I think all council members received it, from, I think, a complete streets advocacy group. And they had one line in their letter that said, "As members of this project alliance, we understand and fully recognize that this project is subject to public engagement, stakeholder collaboration, and approval for each respective district in the community." I couldn't state my position any better. And that's all we're looking for here, is to get the facts straight. And you've done a great job. So if we can share again the slides I used last, or two weeks ago, if the technicians have it there. Okay, so this is what we're dealing with for the last six months. This is the only numbers we had available, put out to the public. You see, the cost there is $18.5 million. We had $12.25 million in grants. So that first number, 18.5, has more than doubled, and thankfully, the grants have also almost doubled. But either way, we need to be transparent with the public. The schedule now, the spring/summer bid, we're moving to fall. And then construction will not happen this fall, it will happen in the spring of '24. And the quality is complete streets, and so that was my question. If, in fact, we can't, if these numbers are not doable, do we question the quality? Can we put this much money in the project? So we can go to the next slide. And the bridge, that has been answered now. So instead of four total traffic lanes, that will be three, two lanes going south and one lane going north, and that will be able to accommodate the bike lanes. Okay, next slide. So this is one that was brought up, and I thought, and several of the renderings actually show this, that the bus is stopping to load and unload passengers in the number-two traffic lane. And I believe the structure there is called a bus island, that anyone has to actually walk across the bike lane, or use a wheelchair across the bike lane to get on the bus. I did not take a position on this, but I just thought, in the interest of transparency, this is the type of thing we need to tell the public before we break ground. And so we didn't have the numbers, so I actually called on Long Beach Transit to produce the numbers for this stretch. So if you can go to the next slide, I think we have it there. So this is Route 173 that connects Norwalk to downtown Long Beach. It goes down Atherton Street and feeds Cal State Long Beach. So your weekday travel, every 30 minutes, there's a bus. Weekday evening travel, every 60 minutes. Weekday travel, if I can read that, every, weekend travel, every 45 minutes, and weekend evening travel, every 60 minutes. Now here's a staggering number. Total bus stops along Studebaker is 51. So we're going to have, if every bus stop is not the same, in fact, in the director's slide presentation, there was one where the bus was up against the curb and others that use bus islands. But all I'm trying to do is get the picture out there to the public, because we were asked all these questions and we really didn't have the information to provide. So that was the purpose of this, for this discussion, and I think all the questions have been answered. And I was just looking for that, and also, if this is not doable, if we don't have the funding, what is the plan B? So I think everything's been answered, so thank you for the presentation.
All right. Councilmember Duggan.
I just want to thank you for the update, Mr. Lopez. And I think this is a really good project, and getting some more definition on it was important for all three of our districts with the five miles. Thank you, Councilmember Supranaw. You brought up good points, and I appreciate that. You did a lot of work on that too. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilwoman Kerr.
Thank you for the presentation, the update, and to my colleagues for bringing it forward. I'm so excited about this project. The mobility piece, I think, is really important. It's a north-south corridor that folks can take from the easternmost part of the city all the way down to the shore, in a safe way. Beach Streets is probably my favorite event that we do at the city. And having it just a couple weeks ago, we realized lots of folks in this city have bikes. Tens of thousands of people come out to ride their bikes when we make it safe for them to do so. And the improvements along this corridor make it safe for them to go places on their bikes they may not have thought of before. So for that piece, for students who can travel this corridor to the university, or to the high school, or the myriad of schools in between, it's really exciting, and I'm looking forward to moving forward with it.
Thank you. Before we go to public comment, just one note. You know, when I saw that number, 18 million, at the last presentation, I said, "It's no way that that project is $18 million." When we started with Artesia Boulevard, $5 million. That was the original plan, right? And then when, you know, as it developed over time, and then bid came out, and we said, "Okay, we've got like $30 million in our pocket, let's go to bid." Came back like $38, $40 million, or something like that. But on projects like this, people get excited, because there's momentum, and other agencies contribute to make it happen. And so we shouldn't be afraid of taking on big projects like this, because resources layer together and we end up with a great product. So this is going to be an incredible corridor. I can't wait until it actually gets to the point where we're breaking ground on this project. Artesia's looking great. You know, I live on the north side. Artesia's looking great. I'm seeing action take place on Market. Councilman Austin was mentioning, we were waiting on that, but I see it, right? Things are happening. So this is really good progress on four, like, major corridors. Where are we with Anaheim? Are we in the works on that?
Yeah, so Anaheim benefited from federal funding as well. So we've been going through the federal funding process. I believe we're almost done with it. Musen, can you?
Yes, I think the Anaheim corridor, we are in the process of getting all the funding together. We did get an earmark that was done last two years, I believe, from Alonthal. And the earmark made it, and we're under the impression that those funds will hit the city budget. Unfortunately, it's not. It needs to go similar to the E-76. But we did have a high-level discussion with Caltrans at the headquarters, and they were able to help us to see if we can write on the existing E-76 and modify it, or rectify the one that we have, the NEPA and CEQA. And if it is the same description within the same limit, then we can incorporate the $7 million to be added, to where we will be able to do the signal, the safety improvement for the median, and pick up all the rest of the improvement that we need to do. So we are in the process of doing that. We were told like, maybe it takes like four to six months, but we're hoping that really the process takes the 90 days that we're talking about. So we are modifying all of that and sent the paperwork to Caltrans already last week. So we are working on it very closely and get maybe under construction maybe by the end of this year.
Okay, so, okay, so we'll be, hopefully, before the end of the year, in construction on that one. That's great, because these four corridors were probably some of those challenged corridors from a pedestrian safety standpoint, and they didn't look great, those four corridors. So this is going to be a big upgrade across the whole city, in terms of safety and aesthetics. So good work. Councilman Supranaw.
Yeah, one last thing I neglected to mention is that our friends in Orange County also use that corridor for bus routes. So OCTA has bus stops in addition to Long Beach Transit's 51. So I'm thinking, I know engineering does this anyway, but just so we could publicly do some type of analysis of what are the impacts of the bus and how will traffic flow with the buses stopping in a traffic lane.
Great, thank you. We have six members of the public signed up to speak. Chloe, Carrie, Erin, Donald, Cassidy, and Carl, please come forward. Chloe's up first.
My name is Chloe Pesquol, and I live in District 5, and I work in District 4 of Long Beach. And I'm strongly in favor of the proposed improvements on Studebaker Road and any complete streets improvements that can be made throughout the city. I commute about half the time by bicycle and half the time by bus on Long Beach Transit. And Studebaker Road is on my bicycle route from work at CSULB to my home in Bixby Knolls. Because the 405 freeway cuts our city in half, there are precious few safe routes to get home from one side of the freeway to the other outside of a car. The difference between a complete street like the one proposed and a lane with only a strip of paint separating me from cars might be the difference someday that will decide whether I get home safely to my daughter. Because I use both my bicycle and public transit to get around Long Beach every week, it is important to me that the proposed improvements take bikes and buses out of conflict with each other. This is safer and less stressful for everyone, and it allows buses to operate faster and more efficiently. If I'm on my bike, I'm not fighting with you for parking spots, and I'm not one more car in front of you on the freeway, and all I want is to be safe on my way home. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is Carrie.
Hi, everyone. My name is Carrie Beth Lyric. I'm a resident of District 3. I use my bike for about 85% of the travel that I do. I am a non-car owner. I ride about 80 miles in Long Beach every week. And I want to tell you that on my ride over here from home, I was really happy to see a lot of the other improvements that I've seen us make to bicycle infrastructure. And I wanted to touch a little bit on the bus islands. East of Alameda, we have them along the Broadway corridor. And I can tell you right now that those bus islands have made a wealth of a difference in making it feel safe as people come off the freeway there. Or they treat it like coming off the freeway right there. And having a separated bike island allows cars to turn right wider, which then allows them to slow down a little bit and just like notice that we're in the way sometimes, which we really need people to see us when we're riding our bikes. I want to say, more importantly, I wanted to extend my gratitude to Eric Lopez and the team over at Public Works. They are doing great work on the Studebaker Road corridor project and all the other corridor projects. And I'm really, really grateful to their dedication to complete streets. Anyone should be able to get wherever they need to go, regardless of income, regardless of ability, and regardless of age. And that corridor goes along so many places, close to the VA Hospital, close to CSULB, close to the Eldorado Park, and connects down to the Marina at Trader Joe's, where my partner works. So thank you so much, and please keep doing this stuff. This is something that we like. Please keep doing it. Thank you.
As long as they keep giving us money, we will. Next is Erin.
Hi. I'm also in favor of complete streets. I often come here and say things like that. I don't often tell you why I care about this. I have a degenerative disease, and in a few years, I won't be able to drive. And I need things like complete streets so that I can use an electric bike, or whatever it is, to help me get around, because it won't be safe for me or for anyone else on the road if I insist on driving past the time when it's safe. And I know that I'm not the only person that experiences this. If your parents lost the ability to drive, like that happens, eventually people are just too old, they lose their sight, they lose their coordination. And, you know, we need a way to get away around our city safely. It builds independence. And these type of projects do this for kids as well. High school students should be able to get themselves to school without a car. And, you know, I hear you say, "50 bus stops, we're going to be behind the bus. How dare we be behind the bus?" Come on! There are things that are more important than two seconds behind the bus. Please. The cars can still use the second lane to pass the bus. They'll be fine. They'll get there. Really, our commutes are going to be much, much shorter if we get people out of their cars, onto their bikes, onto their feet. Give them options so that we don't have to all be stuck in traffic all the time, and so that everyone can get around this city safely, even if they can't drive. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Donald.
My name is Donald Moore. I haven't done much public speaking, but what everyone says I find very touching. Someday, I may be in that boat. I'm 78 years old, I have COPD. I may not be able to drive too much longer. I've got one bad eye, one decent eye. As far as the buses are concerned, I think they should stop in that second lane and not pull over, because otherwise, they're somewhat endangering the bicyclists. It's going to make things more complicated for the bicyclists, in particular inexperienced cyclists and children. Then the bus has to pull back out into the traffic. Anytime you've got a big vehicle like that pulling into traffic, it can create confusion. You can have people trying to zip by, not quite realizing what the bus is going to do. So I think maybe it's better for the bus to stop in that second lane than to have to pull in. Also, on a somewhat different subject, I'd like to say that this sounds like an excellent project you're doing here. Congratulations. But I'd also like to see more enforcement of existing traffic speed limits and so forth, because it is very disconcerting to be riding my bicycle down the street and have somebody go by me at 50 miles an hour. 35 miles an hour when I'm already doing 10 or 15 isn't so bad. But we don't have enough enforcement. People have been killed waiting to make a left turn, get rear-ended in their car. There's no reason why that should happen in town. You shouldn't be going that fast. So please, let's get better enforcement of existing traffic laws and so forth. And I think that's... One more thing. The woman back here said that homeless people have hygiene problems. I'd like to recommend that they go to 7th and Atlantic at St. Luke's Church on Saturday mornings at 8:00. That's when we have something called the shower power there. They can get a shower, they can get clean clothes, fresh clothes, kind of get their pick. I know I've worked there for about a year now. I think it would be a wonderful thing for these people. And thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is Cassidy.
Hi, good evening. My name is Cassidy. I'm in the 4th District. I came here because I want to say yes to complete streets. That's regardless of whether the bike lane is protected or not. Consistency is key to making this kind of infrastructure. I don't know if any of you ride your bikes in protected lanes or non-protected lanes, but I will give you some good/bad examples of roads I actually rode today that are protected lanes, and I want Public Works to take these things into consideration. For example, Broadway, parked cars lining up. Who can see a cyclist in the protected lane coming in and out of driveways? Nobody. I mean, that is so dangerous. Like, I was on my beater bike today, not my road bike, so I was going like eight miles per hour, and I was afraid of dying in a protected lane. And I also know of personal examples of people getting killed in protected bike lanes. So I don't want us to think that just because we have protected bike lanes, people cannot get killed, especially when there is a huge discrepancy between the speed of people in the bike lane and people using traffic. Because when those cars turn, they take out cyclists, and they can kill cyclists. Another bad example, Whole Foods. Who's been to that Whole Foods on 2nd Street? And they have that protected bike lane in Marina. I have never seen that thing clean. I never ride in that protected bike lane, because it is blocked consistently by trucks. It has debris in it. it is blocked consistently by trucks. It has debris in it that is never swept, and that is an issue, because a lot of these protected bike lanes aren't wide enough for any street sweeping to happen. Those vehicles cannot even squeeze in to sweep. That's why it is always filled with debris. We cannot continue to make bike lanes that are protected that are unclean and unusable. It moots this whole process. It moots all this money we're putting into it. So let's make it wide enough at least so that we can sweep it. That was my other point. Another point I wanted to make is, in addition to the infrastructure that we're doing, let's put up signs acknowledging the amendment that's been made to CVC 21760, which is, in addition to the 3 Feet for Safety Act, they've amended it, to say cars must now change lanes when passing a cyclist. It's a powerful law, and now we can legally put in signs saying bikes may use full lane. That is powerful language, in addition to putting more crosswalks in, which I'm seeing in this, which I think is awesome. We need to slow cars down if we want to reach Vision Zero, and I know that Long Beach is gonna be the first major city in the U.S. to accomplish Vision Zero, and I am all for that. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And finally, it's Carl.
Yes, I'm a resident of District Four and a member of Walk-Bike Long Beach. We now call ourselves Bike Long Beach. We strongly support the city's continued efforts to design and construct the proposed Studebaker Complete Streets, as well as all the other complete street activities that are being done. We appreciate the city councils receiving a public status update on this project. It's been very useful. As a local chapter of Bike LA, which advocates for all of LA County, not just the city, our mission is to advocate for a safe, more complete bicycle network, so that cycling can be an easy and practical mode of transport to Long Beach visitors and residents. The existing bicycle facilities on Studebaker Corridor range widely in their visual and physical separation from vehicle traffic, and in some places, no separation exists at all. East Long Beach has basically two major north-south corridors right now. The San Gabriel River, which lacks a lot of connection to a lot of facilities, and Bellflower, which is a very useful thing, but there's a big gap, and I think Studebaker can fill that gap and provide a backbone in that north-south direction. Long Beach can be a leader in getting people out of their cars and into alternative modes of transportation, whether that be walking, bicycling, scooters, and buses. In fact, Long Beach should remember that we were a leader in light rail in the LA area 20 years ago with the A-line, and that system is being expanded, and all these other alternative systems can be expanded. Let's envision a different future, where we get people out of cars and walking, bicycling, taking buses. I see a future right now. We're running down the road of electric cars are the solution. They're not the solution. Where are you going to put the charging stations? You think you have people complaining now about traffic and parking? Wait until every one of those cars need to have a charging station in front of their house, their business, their parking space. We can go down that road. We can repeat the errors of the past. Or we can look at and say, hey, let's encourage alternative modes of transportation. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes public comment. Take it back behind the rail, Councilmember Suppano.
Thank you. I thought I quoted Eric Lopez correctly, but someone tells me I possibly didn't, so let's go verify this. So, the bid process will likely happen in fall '23, and then the... I don't want to say groundbreaking, but let's say that a contract could be awarded in spring of '24. Is that accurate?
Yes, that is accurate, Councilman.
Okay. I think that's what I said the first time, but I'm more than happy to clarify it. Thank you.
Thank you. Members, please cast your vote.
The motion is carried.
Thank you. There are no more presentations, so these next few items are pretty straightforward. Item 23, please.
Item 23 is communication from Mayor Rex Richardson, recommendation to suspend council rule relating to the meeting schedule of the city council in order to cancel the city council meeting of July 4, 2023.
Thank you. In observance of Independence Day, which falls on a regular scheduled council meeting this year, we're moving to cancel the council meeting on Tuesday, July 4, to recognize the federal holiday. It's been moved and seconded. Any public comment on this? Members, please cast your vote.
I'll just note that the item up on the screen is not the correct item.
Yeah, this isn't the correct item. Item 23, not ordinance 23. There it is. We need to requeue the motion in second, please. Thank you. Members, please cast your vote.
Motion is carried.
25, please.
Item 25 is a report from financial management, recommendation to adopt resolution requesting that the Board of Harbor Commissioners approve the transfer of 5% of fiscal year 2023, District One, Two, and Three.
Thank you. Is there a second? Members, please... Is there a public comment? Members, please cast your vote.
Councilwoman Sorrow. Motion is carried.
26, please.
Item 26, report from financial management, recommendation to adopt resolution authorizing city manager to execute a contract with Los Angeles Truck Center LLC for the purchase of CNG power crane carrier trucks in a total amount not to exceed 2.9 million. Citywide.
Thank you. The item's been moved and seconded. Is there any public comment? Seeing none, members, please cast your vote.
Motion is carried.
27.
Item 27 is report from financial management, recommendation to adopt resolution authorizing city manager to execute a contract with Los Angeles Truck Centers for the purchase of CNG crane carrier Rotopack Si load or refuse truck in a total amount not to exceed 4.7 millions, and authorize city manager to execute a lease purchase agreement with Bank of America Public Capital Corp. for financing of Rotopack refuse trucks. Citywide.
The item's been moved and seconded. Is there any public comment? Seeing none, members, please cast your vote.
Motion is carried.
28.
Item 28 is report from financial management, recommendation to adopt specification and award a contract to South Coast Fire Equipment, Inc. for the purchase of Pierce Enforcer Triple Combination Fire Engine Pumper Trucks in an amount not to exceed 11.3 millions. Authorize city manager to execute an agreement with Bank of America Public Capital Corp. for the financing of fire engine pumppers. Citywide.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any public comment? Members, please cast your vote.
Motion is carried.
I believe we're on item 30 now, correct? 29.
Item 29 is a report from financial management, Public Works, recommendation to adopt resolution authorizing city manager to execute a contract with Los Angeles Truck Center LLC for the purchase of 20 CNG crane carrier Si load or refuse trucks in an amount not to exceed 9.3 million. Citywide.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Any public comment? Seeing none, members, please cast your vote.
Motion is carried.
Thank you. Item 30, please.
Item 30 is report from Parks, Recreation, and Marine, recommendation to authorize city manager to execute all documents with Great Scott Tree Service, Inc. for as needed tree trimming and removal services in an amount not to exceed 3.2 million. Citywide.
Thank you. This item has one member of the public signed up to speak. TK, please come forward. Great Scott Tree trimming? No? Okay. Members, please cast your vote.
Councilwoman Rexody. Motion is carried.
32, please.
32 is report from Parks, Recreation, Marine, Health, and Human Services, recommendation to adopt resolution authorizing city manager to accept grant funds from the California Natural Resources Agency for capital improvements at Weekly Green Belt and Multi-Service Center in an amount not to exceed 5.2 million, District Seven.
Okay. Is there a staff report requested here?
So these next two items, we can answer questions, but these are essentially earmarks that we've received in the past, and we've celebrated those, and now we're doing the paperwork to be able to do them. So this one in particular is about the Wrigley Green Belt and funding for a multi-service center, and we can answer any questions.
Councilmember Yuranga.
Anytime we receive free money, I'm voting for it, so thank you. But I'd still like Mr. Nettis to give a little brief report, please.
Yeah, thank you, Councilman. So for Wrigley Green Belt, which we celebrated its substantial completion, this additional $1.2 million goes towards directional signage, as well as some additional accessibility improvements for the park, for the Green Belt. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Austin? Councilman Zindejas?
I'm happy to support this, and it always makes me happy to see green space investment coming to our west side of Long Beach. I'm also very excited to know that our multi-service center will be receiving improvements funds, thanks to the generosity and advocacy of our state Senator Nina Gonzalez. I was wondering if... I know you said there'll be significant repairs done. Are there any examples that you might be able to give us in regards to what those repairs might be?
Sure. Paul Duncan, please.
Sure. There's a number of improvements that we've been identifying on site. Some of our fencing needs to be repaired and updated, as well as some of our outside space and where people congregate, revisioning that and making it more user-friendly when people are waiting outside. And then there are a number of features inside that are both from a perspective of just making it a better environment as people are waiting, providing more resources to help people, like putting in a charging station that has locking units that people can charge their phones or laptop in, and then things that will improve our safety, such as upgrading our safety buttons and lighting to alert if there's an issue, upgrading our camera system. So there's a number of different things that have just, over time, need to be refreshed, so this is gonna allow us to do that and just enhance our environment overall.
Thank you so much for that update.
Thank you. There are two members of the public signed up to speak. Francesca Shaboya and TK, please come forward.
I definitely... I've already said today that I support green space. I support the MSC. My only concern is when I was looking at this agenda item, that a majority of the funds were going to MSC, and only 1 million was allocated to green space, which is concerning because this item is meant to specifically address Natural Resources Agency, and when I looked at the requirements of here, this is looking at environmental equity. And again, as I emphasized before, there is an issue within this area, specifically when it comes to green space and green space equity. And while I 100% support the efforts to support our unhoused, my concern is that sometimes we reallocate funds that should be supporting our underserved communities to be given to others, which definitely needed, but we shouldn't be taking away from the neighborhoods that also need these services and that are also underserved. So I don't have any issue in supporting either one of these efforts. I'm just concerned about how they're being allocated. Also, because I did look up, looking at the funding that was used for the MSC and even the tiny homes that was mentioned earlier, and per the city, a couple of months ago, the city received over $30 million, and per the city, that that was gonna be allocated specifically to support the improvements of MSC and also tiny home construction. So if that's the case, I'm wondering why so much is being allocated for the MSC with this initiative, when it could go towards these equitable initiatives to support green space in this neighborhood? So those are my concerns. Again, I 100% support MSC. I'm not saying let's not support it. I'm just questioning how that's being allocated. Thank you.
Thanks. And I'll just say, this is just accepting grant funds is what this action does. It just allows us to take the money as given. There's no allocation here. I just wanted to clarify for you. Thank you. TK, you're up.
At some point, it's gonna be allocated, so she's speaking on it before that happens. How about that one? Okay, to piggyback off of what Francesca said, by all means, we want to serve our unhoused folks, and I understand that this is just a thing about allegation, but the reality is that you can't take one community, underserved community, to help out another underserved community. This totally impacts that first community. Some of the burden needs to go on some of our other communities that are thriving, where it won't be a break in their everyday-to-day lives. These monies that is granted for these green spaces are needed for the parks, the safe spaces for kids to play, the upkeep of those things, and for those green spaces to allow environmental-friendly activities, and just the well-being of a person's mind, body, and soul. Again, I'm not saying take away from the multicultural center. What I am saying is that those funds should not be going majority to there. It should not even be a split, but if it has to be, let it be equally done, not just 4 million going, and then 1 million to the green spaces. It's supposed to be just for that green area. So again, not saying don't help the multi-center. What I am saying is that if the funds were allocated to the Wrigley Green Belt, that money should go to them specifically, and the multicultural center needs to have funds coming in another route. This has already been addressed, like you said earlier, that it seems like with the tiny homes and all of that whole program, that that should fit in that same umbrella. I don't understand why another struggling community has to suffer and look bad when there's funds that was allocated to them. So do the right thing and have the money to go where it needs to go. Always following the money.
Thank you. Members, please cast your vote.
Motion is carried.
Item 33, please.
Item 33 is report from Parks, Recreation, Marine, and Public Works, recommendation to authorize city manager to accept grant funds for capital improvements for various parks in an amount not to exceed 15.4 million, District Four and Nine.
Can we have a brief update on what this is? Staff?
Sure. Similar to the one before, these are dollars from our senators and assembly members. When they went through a process when the state had extra funding, they worked with us and identified priorities and gave us direct dollars specifically for our projects, things like a huge investment in Eldorado Regional Park, investment in Houghton Park, investment in Sterns Park.
Thank you. Councilmember Rexody.
I was just gonna say, I am always a huge supporter of any time we're able to invest in our open space, and the mayor and I both know that Houghton Park and the playground has been a long-term exist, a project we wanted to tackle, and so I'm super excited that we have funding for it, so this is gonna be great.
Thank you. This needs a second. All right. Councilmember Zindejas, thank you. Any public comment here? Members, please cast your vote.
Councilman... Motion is carried.
34, please.
Item 34 is report from Public Works, recommendation to authorize city manager to amend several contracts for as needed architectural and landscape services, construction management and inspection services, and urban planning design services. Citywide.
It's been moved and seconded. Any public comment? Members, please cast your vote.
Motion is carried.
35, please.
Thirty-five is a report from city manager. Recommendation to declare ordinance, amending the Long Beach Municipal Code related to the operation of adult-use dispensaries in mixed-use buildings in downtown Long Beach. Read and adopted as read. City Y.
We need a motion in a second. It's been moved, there's a second. Thank you. There are eight members of the public signed up for public comment. I'll read them, please come forward. Christopher Woodard, Demetrik Woodard, Micah Woodard, Muriel Breal, Sergio Sandoval, Edgar Cruz, Stacy Collins, and Michael Fletcher. Please come forward. Is Christopher here? Gone once. Are you Christopher? Okay. Okay. Christopher's up.
He doesn't talk very much.
Well, I got Christopher on my list, signed up to speak, so. Christopher's up first.
All right, Christopher Woodard, I'm here just to give a, add something briefly about the recent developments in the dispensaries. You know, I and my brother together, we were one of the original lottery winners back from 5.87, and had dispensaries, and with that, a bunch of things transpired with my brother and I behind that, you know. A lot of bad things, you know, with one being my arrest and basically vilifying me, my reputation as a bad guy when we did everything the city asked of us. And then they turned it and tried to use it against us. And so I'm here because it seemed like now it's happening again, just in a different way. So, you know, I wasn't very confident to come up here and speak to begin with because, you know, there's still wounds open from that. Still wounds, I'm still suffering behind that whole ordeal, you know, when all we tried to do was the right thing. So as far as not getting selected this go-around, it's kind of like, I would like to know, if not who else qualified, why wouldn't it us? We were the only dispensary owned by any black. So we're the only ones to begin with, you know, when the beginning of this. So if anybody qualified, it should have been us qualified. That's all I have to say. Thanks.
Thank you. Next is Demetrik Woodard.
The man of little to no words, you did great, brother.
Thank you. Good job. Thank you.
Yes, hi, I'm Demetrik Woodard. And once again, me and my brother was partners in our dispensary, Industry Green Collective, original lottery winners September of 2010. When we were black then, and we're still black now, we won then, and there was a motion at some point during the May 2022 council meeting to allow us to have a 10% increase within licensing process, RFP process, and for some reason, that was overlooked, and I would just like to know why. Is there, does anybody even know why? I mean, I know you guys can't really respond, but does anyone really know why? It wasn't even part of the metrics. You get 10% for this, 25% for that, 50% for this, 25% for that, for a max of 100%. It wasn't even a thought of an additional 10%. And I know that we're unicorns because there's no one else that even exists. All right, there was no one black in 2010 but us. There was no one black in 2017, and here we still are. All right. And I know that back in those days, back in 2010, there was no marijuana enforcement agency, there was no cannabis oversight commission. We submitted our paperwork, it was $14,752, times two, one for the cultivation. We weren't sure if it was going to initially be per person. There was a staff member, let's call it financial management, I don't want to mention anyone by name. We submitted amendment, have me as a managing member, and there was no checks and balances, there weren't no licensing back then. It was called a permit, as a matter of fact, it's called permey, they forgot the T, sort of the details. And I just wanted to just ensure that, is there going to be an asterisk nine? I mean, but somebody needs to do something because there is no other great example of social injustice in the cannabis industry versus the Woodards who made history back in 2010. Please help us right the wrong and then get us licensed. I'm not sure if there's something that can be done now. Can we get our own agenda item? There's no one in this industry is not going to talk against the Woodard brothers. We were did extremely wrong. What you have in front of you is you have arrest records, the seizures of our homes, you have my brother's house being raided, you have my house being raided, you have me being arrested, my name all over the place, and there's some things, I know I'm trying to be invasive, but who wants to be arrested? I was slandered, I was talked bad about amongst my sports community, I had to check my son out of school, I was being followed around, I just went through a whole ordeal. I just want what's provided and allotted to us. I really appreciate it. Thank you much.
Thank you. Next is Micah.
Also speaking on behalf of Demetrik Woodard and Christopher Woodard, and the injustice they've experienced and continue to experience. I was around the age of 12 when the dispensary, the legally operated and owned dispensary was taken from them, and the damage to our family's lives was extensive, and the trauma was real. Our lives was ripped apart. Like I said, the youth organization that my father founded, he was slandered, he was forced to step down and remove. He was also coaching at Long Beach High, he had to step down from that, and even my brother had to check out for a time until things calmed down. My uncle was imprisoned for a time, before freed, and I just can't tell you what that does when you go from successful, hard-working family who was doing their best in the community and then have that overturned. And as we continue to try to progress in this process, it seems like the same tactics are being used again. These were black men who worked hard, who scraped $14,000 to apply originally, and here we are again, almost 20 years or 10 years later, and we're still struggling with the same injustices. They're being redlined through technicalities and loopholes. That 10% that was promised has not been met, and we're just looking for some justice and for some redemption for what was done back in 2010. We've been uniquely affected by the war on drugs because we haven't committed any marijuana crimes. We did things the right way, and we're afflicted for it. You know, it was such a confusing time back then, but seeing my father persevere has been one of the greatest inspirations as I move forward through college and my professional life. And so I would just love to see, you know, this story have a happy ending at the end of it all. So I would greatly appreciate your help, and I recognize that this is a difficult job you guys have, you know, a lot of agendas, a lot of things, but if you guys could please take note of this, you know, particular issue and the injustice that he's experiencing in the city of Long Beach, that'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Muriel.
Great evening, everyone, with giving all glory and honor to God and to Jesus. You already know what time it is. Y'all already know who I am. I believe y'all have already received the paperwork, the memorandum that they sent out so that you all can see who the eight were that was selected. They've already commented on it, none of them were women. Me and Tamika were on that list. We also are women who already have facilities in Long Beach, who had state licensing, who had city licensing, who have actual cannabis experience currently, and yet I literally was at the bottom of the list. So you all are telling me that someone who has no cannabis experience, who doesn't have a strong connection to Long Beach, who was a blond-haired, blue-eyed man, can come in way before me and get one of the dispensaries, and yet someone who's like me, who does have the experience, who is social equity, who is applicant number seven, is counted out for nothing. Right now on you all's panel, you have six women that are sitting there, including two black men, and I have a text message that, same way as how Michael read that, you told Elliot that we're not ready, and yet we are ready because you can see that we have licensing. We come here and we lobby to you all all the time, so now we're asking you to do what's right. When I came here before, I told you, you all are trying to wash your hands and give this process over to people who have no idea about what social equity is, and exactly what I said was going to happen, happened, and yet at this time, you all have the opportunity to step in and do something about it, but you are once again washing your hands with the man saying, oh, we can't do anything right now, you know, because we're in the middle of the protest period. But then after the protest period, what happens? We all are going to submit our protest trust, but we all want you to do something about it. Right now, the people that's on there are part of the multi-state operators, and they've given away 49% of their equity. Yet us who are on our own, I have zero investors. I would own 100%, same thing with my facility right now in Sumbee's District. I own 100% of that. Cultivation, manufacturing, and distribution, that's mine. The cannabis state event license is mine. I don't have huge backing, and yet y'all considered it nothing. Also, we have private investigations or private investigators who have investigated the people that you all have chosen. They don't have strong connections to Long Beach. They don't meet the criteria that you all have asked for. In addition, a lot of the words that you all have said are contradictory. Also, a person who was on the panelist, one of the panelists, Whitney Beatty, has had personal and professional relationships with different applicants. That's a complete conflict of interest, which you all said shouldn't happen, and yet no one said anything. So I'm asking you all to step in and do something because it's evident Valencia's not doing anything. It's evident her boss isn't doing anything, and you all are going to continue to move on. The other week, you said that you failed social equity, and you all were looking to do something about it to help. Now's your chance to help.
Thank you. Next is Sergio. Sergio Sandoval.
Hello, my name's Sergio Sandoval, I'm a resident of Long Beach, California. I was here present during 2010 during the lottery, and I'm here to speak on behalf of the Woodard brothers. I was working as a paralegal at that time and after, and it was, they are the only black applicant to have won the lottery, much less paid the 14,742 times twice, which, you know, was the 10% margin. If you paid that, you got the 10%. So they paid it, they paid it twice, and they also won. And why they don't get the 10% is just, we didn't understand it, and we're still trying to figure that out. After that, Industry Green got hit out by the Parks and Beaches statute that said that if you're near a park and beach, you lose your lottery win. So they went through that, then they started getting raided. At that point, at the raid, they got all of their documents, everything taken from them. And that, two years following that, the Industry Greens closed, and Chris and Dimitri are both raided, and Chris goes to jail. I mean, it's horrible, nine months of jail, and they didn't get anything to stick to him because it was all untrue, and they said that he was a kingpin. It was all untrue, smears, defamation, everything, just the horror that this family's gone through is just, it's just beyond belief. And this is the time to make it right. Social equity is it. And why it's been denied them is just up in the air, and we're extremely surprised. The only thing they're guilty of is being the only black-owned winner of the 2010 lottery process, and they deserve that 10%. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Edgar Cruz. Just so we, I'm reading off the list, Edgar Cruz, then Stacy Collins, then Michael Fletcher.
Honorable members of city council, I'm here to express my concerns. We've got under proposed design guidelines specifically 5.92.765.c.1 across all cannabis licenses types in Long Beach. While understanding the importance of establishing regulations to assure public safety and responsible business practices within the cannabis industry, I believe that the current ordinance possesses significant economic hardships, security risks, and thefts particularly for non-retail businesses, and also warrants an avenue for relief. Applying to design guidelines uniformly without considering the specific needs and limitations of different license types of cannabis businesses could potentially stifle the growth of non-retail entrepreneurs. As we all understand, the non-retail section encompassing cultivation, manufacturing, and distribution plays a vital role in the cannabis industry. These businesses often require substantial investment in specialized equipment, infrastructure, and in compliance measures, forcing them to meet the same rigorous requirements as retail establishments place an undue burden on their economic viability. Hindering the ability to compete and thrive has been more damaging for equity entrepreneurs. More so, the proposed standards may lead to lack of diversity and innovation within the cannabis sector. Startups and entrepreneurs looking to enter the cannabis market with innovative products and services may find it increasingly difficult to navigate the costly and complex regulatory framework. This could potentially discourage new businesses from entering the markets, stifling competition, and limiting consumer choice. In order to foster a thriving cannabis industry that benefits both the local economy and the community at large, I urge city council to consider providing an avenue for relief for non-retail cannabis businesses. This could involve exploring options such as phased implementation of design guidelines, providing financial assistance or tax incentives to offset compliance costs, or establish a set of separate regulations tailored specifically to non-retail operations. That's basically was just in regards to the specific agenda item. I also have something to say on the, at the onset of this process, Long Beach City Council approved eight equity dispensaries to promote business ownership opportunities for equity applicants. The city has allocated resources to grants funding to ensure the success of newly-formed businesses, but at what cost? Equity applicants are truly struggling to create a cannabis business and have found some that the city promised to safeguard us from it. It, let's see, it would be naive to assume that corporate raiders wouldn't try to recruit equity strawmen to grab as many opportunities as they could, which we have seen in this RFP process. While we expected outside interest to try and win these licenses, we are shocked that the mismanagement of this process and complete lack of business vetting happened. I hope for the sake of the city and for the equity community.
Thank you.
Next is Stacy Collins. It's your turn, Stacy. You're up now.
Good evening. I am again, part of the Woodard group, supporting that family, in the fact that I was an employee, and understanding that when this family had an opportunity to take on other people and advance our community in a sense, then that wiped out the opportunity for a lot of us to go a little bit further, obtain financial security for our families and families to come, generations to come. So I just want to reiterate the fact that we do need to readdress that RFP, because again, there have been notions that there are people that were on the board that should not have been on the board in compliance with relationship-wise, and again, the scoring process, all of that should be evaluated, reassessed, and redetermined, and the fact that, as some other people have stated, we have a history here. We have a history of having done it, started it, again, being the first blacks to obtain that lottery spot, and I kudos Long Beach for the fact that you're doing what other cities are not allowing others to do. So we need to make sure that we're allowing the people who are qualified in the sense of social equity, social justice in the sense as well, that we advance and we have those same opportunities. It's not always allowing someone else to start the path, but knowing that we are the path makers and making sure that other people are able to follow what we lead in, and it's not about someone else taking the lead. It's about our people being able to take the lead. We have to understand that and advance in that industry as well as any other industry, and I'm going to leave it there. And just real quick, if we have to have a nine, let's add a nine. Let's not leave people out that are qualified to do the job. And then don't forget that women need their place as well.
Thank you, Ms. Collins. Next is Michael Fletcher.
I was walking out when Mayor Richardson made a statement when he said, "We can't do anything because it's under investigation." That is a blatant lie. You all, do you then have the city attorney say, "Oh, you have to wait for the appeal process to be over?" Once that happens, they have property interests that are protected, and we have no appeal rights. That was a fundamental misstatement of law. You all can, right now, take action and say, "We've heard a lot of stuff. It's your obligation. He's lying." That's why I'm talking to you, your younger politicians. You guys don't have to go along with the lobbyists. I ran campaigns forever. He's going with the lobbyist. For, for them to say, and for the staff to say, you can't do anything, you're the council. This is the review period. You have evidence of fraud in the award of a government contract. You are subject to liability under the federal tort, you're subject to liability under federal Rico. You can step in right now and say, no, there's too much. Ladies, members of, do you understand that seven of the eight applicants don't live in Long Beach? Do you understand you have given licenses to people who live, more licenses to people who live in San Francisco than in Long Beach? And I want to go back to this female thing. My God. It's, it's appalling. Where do we live? You should be pissed. I'm pissed. These two gentlemen who won't fight for people of color doesn't mean that women have to be that way. I'm African-American. I tell my kids, don't turn your back on your community. Women, you can't turn your back on women. These are extraordinary opportunities. These ladies, it's not just that you're qualified, they're qualified in cannabis. Eight different licenses issued to people with zero cannabis experience. Women, three members of Long Beach Social Equity Entrepreneurs are women with cannabis experience, and they're overlooked. That is not socioeconomic. It's discrimination. Nothing's changed. It's just lip service. You can vote right now. You can say, we're going to stop this process and review it. Just if, if what the staff is saying, you know what, let me also tell you this, they will not, and I'm, Ms. Dugan, I'm asking you, Ms. Zindejas, you appear that you care. They won't give us our scores. We have five days to appeal. They won't give us our score because they say it's subject to, uh, an immunity. There's no such thing. No, they won't give us our scores. It's a fraud, and he's participating in it. You guys could do the right thing. You could do the right thing by doing nothing other than saying, let's look and see, maybe these guys aren't all crazy.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Members, please cast your vote.
Motion is carried.
Thirty-six, please.
Item thirty-six, communication from Councilman Suppana, recommendation to increase appropriation by five hundred dollars to provide support to the Long Beach Blues Society.
Thank you. It's been moved in second. Any public comment here? Members, please cast your vote.
Motion is carried. Item thirty-eight, communication from Councilwoman Zindejas, recommendation to increase appropriation by twenty-five hundred dollars to provide donation to the following. Long Beach Partners of Parks in support of the two thousand and twenty-three Long Beach Juneteenth Celebration in the amount of one thousand dollar. Kelo Creative LLC in support of two thousand and twenty-three Long Beach Taco and Tequila Fest in the amount of one thousand dollar. And Wild West Women Inc. in support of Women's Fair in the amount of five hundred dollar.
Thank you. Is there a second here? Is there any public comment? Members, please cast your vote.
Councilmember Oranga. Motion is carried.
Thank you. That's our last agenda item. We'll now go to general public comment number two. We have twelve members of the public signed up to speak. Does that make it ninety, ninety seconds?
Ninety seconds.
Yes, okay, we've got ninety seconds set up here. So I have Elliot Lewis, Muriel Breal, Demetri Woodit, Woodard, Stacy Collins, Sergio Sandoval, Christopher Woodard, Michael Woodard, TK, Rainham Clenden, Francesca Shaboya, Yvonne Gomez, and Edgar Cruz. Is Elliot Lewis here? Okay, scratch. Is Muriel here? Please come forward.
Good day again. All right, so I'm going to read part of my protest that I'll be submitting to the city, and hopefully you all can do something about it. I have asked to meet with you, Al, I've asked to meet with you, same thing with you many a times. So my point number six, from section one point three in the memorandum that was set out, it says goals. In the RFP, it states, the goal of this RFP is to select qualified equity applicants to apply for eight dispensary licenses, using a merit-based application process to ensure that these licenses are awarded in a fair and equitable manner to cannabis operators that are well-positioned for long-term success and sustainability. Now, this is not what this process has accomplished, thus missing the goal. This was not a fair and equitable process, as those who should have received these licenses were left at the bottom of the list, including myself. While those who have partnered with large multi-state operators and have zero connection to Long Beach and zero cannabis experience were awarded the eight licenses, I will comment on what's going on with Demetri, because you already know I have lobbied for that. I think what happened in his situation was horrible, and to see that when you all released this list, there was no additional ten percent for him. If he would have received the additional ten percent that he was supposed to receive, he would have received one of the eight licenses. Now commenting on the gender-based discrimination. Currently, there are no women-owned cannabis dispensaries within the city of Long Beach, yet in this top twenty.
Thank you. Your time is up.
Y'all have us too, so fix it.
Next is Demetri Woodard.
Hello, hi again. Okay, I just wanted to just touch on things I didn't get a chance to touch on. Once again, back in two thousand and ten, there was no Marijuana Enforcement Agency, there was no Office of Cannabis Oversight. We were to hand in our documents over to, um, financial management. Once again, I'm not going to really mention any names, people have moved on to different cities and things like that. But what I want to ensure is you guys had that documentation in front of you, and whatever, how the paperwork looks, and, and what was destroyed, and through raids, and, and seizures, and things like that. As you guys can see, I was very vested in an act of any type of justice or social injustices. If the coin was flipped, that right there lets you know right then and there that, you know what I mean, I was involved in whatever kind of capacity. So once again, if we can somehow create my own agenda, my own ball, uh, RFP process, whatever the case, because, uh, when you guys have these things over to these different agencies within the city, they like to add different language in there. There was no checks and balances about who was on a license first and all that, and there was no license. It was a permy, a permit. And as you can see, me and my brother are clearly partners. We were clearly, at the same time, simultaneously, you know, raided and jailed as a owner, as a black owner of a dispensary, when it was called narcotics. You know, we were selling narcotics back, that's what it was called, narcotics. And, uh, all these stores these days are living great. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Stacy Collins.
I didn't know I was scheduled to speak again, but nonetheless, I just want to reiterate the fact that, as, um, Demetri just said, it is not a narcotic. That is why we are allowing dispensaries currently. And being that we have discovered that it is medicinal, and it has properties within it that are beneficial for the community, we have to also understand that some of us have gone to school for horticulture and things of that nature, and we ought to be able to utilize those skills, whether it be under the guise of being black or the guise of being a woman. We have to understand that this should be allotted for us to be able to step in and provide something for our community that is helpful, beneficial, and has medicinal properties that are going to be great for the people that need it, and as well as, again, providing financial security for our generations to come, children, grandchildren, and great-grandchildren. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Sergio. Sergio passed, thank you. Next is Christopher. Thank you, Christopher. Next is Micah. Is Micah here? Okay, Micah went to work. Next is TK. One more. Thank you, TK. Next is Raina.
Hello, good evening. My name is Rainham Clenden, and I'm a social equity applicant here in Long Beach. I'm here to talk about the RFP process, how inequitable and discriminatory it is against the female applicants. With this process, not one woman was awarded, and I'm sure that there are women, including myself, who has had previous businesses, um, and that have the experience to run businesses, that could have been considered in one of these eight. Also, to find out that some of the equity applicants that applied were not even, and that were awarded, were not even, uh, living in Long Beach. So I don't understand how they qualified to be equity applicants. If these errors happen, how can we be sure there are no other errors? I'm asking that the City Council see the faults of the unfair process and redo the RFP, so we can all have a fair chance at a correct process. The City Council needs to step up and step in to make sure these wrongs are right. I also think that this process was faulty due to no oversight supervision. I understand, uh, that we can protest this decision that was made, but we are sending protests to the same individuals that denied us in the first place. This is an equity program. This is not supposed to be a program for predatory practices and a second chance for capital companies to get another shot at getting more dispensaries instead of equity applicants. Please stop this unjust process and do what is right. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Francesca.
I'm here to talk about June fourth, two thousand and twenty, almost three years ago to the date, where many Long Beach residents marched to the streets of our city in response to the death of George Floyd, Ahmaud Arbery, and Breonna Taylor. Mayor Garcia stood in front of our residents and promised to address the concerns of systemic racism within the police department and in the city as a whole, and I believe that he failed. Maybe it has something to do with his political campaign, I don't know, that's for another day. But we must acknowledge that as a city, the origins of policing began with patrols who sought out to capture enslaved black Americans who attempted to escape from their enslavers. Policing continued as police forces were used to target black, brown, indigenous, and Asian-American communities, including states like California, including counties like Los Angeles. Police forces were used to shut down organized civil rights movements to prevent the mobilization to increase access to education for communities of color, to shut down efforts to start ethnic studies program, and to target LGBTQ plus communities. This is how this institution was constructed, and while it is painful and uncomfortable for many, it is important to acknowledge this history. I know we pride ourselves on being progressive. I hope that we can continue that progressive effort. The bar is really low, so yes, we are better, but that's not enough. I'm asking that we consider required DEI training for workers, including police departments. I ask that we invest in social services, and like I said earlier, cohorts that have a pathway to social services, careers, teachers, mental health, and that we can do more for our city by investing in social services. And I stand with my black brothers and sisters and non-binary folks when I say Black Lives Matter.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Yvonne Gomez. Is Yvonne here?
I told you that you guys were going to get sick of me. I'm going to be here every single, you can sit there and laugh, I don't know what you're laughing at or giggling at, but I think that I should have your undivided attention. Thank you. My name is Yvonne. I am here speaking again on animal advocacy and Long Beach Animal Shelter. Mr. Mayor, do you know who the new Long Beach Shelter GM is going to be? How can we trust that the community voice is being heard about what is going on in the shelters? Our issues with the system is broken, and this person, Stacy Danes, who is a part of this broken system, is now put in charge of six more shelters. There needs to be an outside, non-biased party, because clearly, these solutions are not working and haven't been working for years. Only now, it's so bad that it can't be swept under the rug, and if you can't see what's going on, it's because you are choosing to turn a blind eye. Because, you know, this isn't just a city problem, it's an entire state of California that is in this pandemic. Their lives should never be put in, on the bargaining table. It's a problem that was created by humans and continues to be a problem created by humans, but the animals are the ones that are being thrown in a cage and pay the price with their lives. It's appalling. Why are breeding licenses still being sold? Mr. Mayor, why are there no adoption events, no transparency, no new approach? Why are dogs being killed before the hold date? This is against the law. That alone should be disqualification to ruin, to run numerous shelters. Somebody more qualified should have gotten the job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our last speaker is Edgar Cruz. Is Edgar here? Are you Edgar? Okay, Edgar's gone. Okay, that's, that satisfies second public comment. We'll go to adjournment and announcements. Councilmembers and Dejas.
Thank you, Mayor. I have three announcements. Join DLPA and our downtown community for our second Amazing Taste of Downtown event. This, this Wednesday and Thursday, June seventh and eighth, along Pine and the Promenade. I also invite everyone to join Vice Mayor Allen and myself and the, and our community partners like AOC Seven and Craftsman's Village for a collaborative cleanup of District One and Two. We will be meeting in front of the Franklin Middle School at nine AM this Saturday morning, also on June tenth. And in addition, we also, on that same day, we will be having a small photo op at ten AM at Craftsman's Village Park to commemorate a soon-to-come Monarch Butterfly Garden in the First District. Please contact my office for any further information.
Thank you. Councilmember Dugan.
I just want to give a shout out to Justin Rudd, who is a fantastic community member, community action team. He does, um, beach cleanups, Operation Easter Basket, Turkey Trot, and it is his birthday today. So, thank you, Justin, and happy birthday.
Happy birthday, Justin. Next is Councilmember Suppana.
Thank you. Happy birthday, Justin. Just one announcement, closing day ceremonies for Long Beach Little League will take place on Saturday at Sterns Park. It will be the seventy-first closing day for the league that was established in nineteen fifty-two. Tonight, I'd like to recognize volunteer Bill Marshall, who has served Long Beach Little League for the past thirty-eight years. I'm requesting we adjourn tonight's meeting in honor and appreciation of Bill Marshall's volunteer service to the city of Long Beach, and we thank him for his dedication to our community. Go forth.
Go forth. Thank you. Councilmember Rick Sode.
I just have three announcements. I would like to invite everyone out to the DeForest Park Neighborhood Association meeting at the DeForest Park Clubhouse at six two five five DeForest Avenue, June fifteenth, from seven PM to eight PM. If you'd like more information, you can contact my office at districtnine@longbeach.gov. I would also like to invite everybody out to the Ramona Park Community Meeting at Ramona Park on June twelfth, from six forty-five to seven forty-five. And lastly, I would also invite the community out to our next Coffee with a Cop. That will be Thursday, June twenty-second, June twenty-second, at the Starbucks at the corner of South Street and Downey. That is at thirty-five oh three South Street, from ten AM to twelve PM, June twenty-second. Again, you can reach out to my office for more information, districtnine@longbeach.gov.
Thank you. Well, that was an unnecessarily long meeting. I want to thank the council members and staff, and this meeting is now adjourned. Have a good night. We'll see you next week. We'll see you next week.